That's, sorry about that.
This is Mike Dorn. Can anyone hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You want to turn on your mic and your camera? I mean, which one is your camera? I'm sorry. To you, how about that?
Yep.
So Tom, you're good? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the correct one?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, cool. All right, let me check.
So Mike Dorn is back. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you. Let me see if we have the right one on it.
No, I'm worried that we're gonna have other people with the same problem because we're getting automatic reminders of the Zoom link, too.
I know. I asked Judy about that. We forgot to turn up the Zoom link. Sorry. My apologies for that.
Do you think it'd be useful? Oh, sorry. Maybe Vaughn, you could send another email? It looks like.
I did before. I did earlier.
How many commissioners do we have?
We have seven, unless anyone's missing tonight.
No, no, no. I mean, who have signed on?
Oh, so so far we have Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Kennedy, Commissioner Tay, I know Commissioner Barnes signed up already.
It looks like Commissioner Tate signed on with your link on.
Oh, there.
Commissioner Riggs.
So Mr. Commissioner Riggs, so let me send you a link again using mine. So, all right, so can you exit out, Commissioner Riggs? And then use someone. I'm gonna resend it to you. So we're having.
Do I need to log out also? Um, I say Vaughn, too? Let's see.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, so I guess all you guys were using the link that I sent to you inside your own invite. All right, hold on, let me, let me, let me resend again to all the commissioners. I meant to the one. All right.
Did you want to say something so we can know we can hear you?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Riggs, can you please sign out and reuse the link I just sent to you, please?
Um, that was the link you sent to me, but I'll be happy to sign out and sign in again.
Yes, can you please sign out and sign in? Because that was, you probably used the link that I sent on the bottom, the link, instead of you should receive your own link.
Yeah. Reminder.
Yeah, so you put reminders like inside of the reminder with the email on the bottom, instead of your own link. Okay, so go ahead, exit out and then come back in. There you go. And then, okay, Commissioner Kennedy, you're good. Thank you. Can all the commissioner, please turn on your camera so that way we know that it works and leave it on, please? Okay, Commissioner Kennedy, Commissioner Harris, thank you. Commissioner, hey, you got it. Thank you. All right, who else are we missing? We're missing Commissioner Barnes.
Yeah, I mean, that's unfair, Kyle. We're not gonna pay 10%, but that, I've gone over, like, I kept on bringing this up to Tom, and he convinced me this morning that it was in there correctly. And I just, you know, I didn't want to cause any waves, and it really didn't matter to us, but I'm, I think that's really unfair to try to some additional 10% on this new fee that we didn't even agree to.
This is Nira. Whoever is speaking, please mute your microphone.
But I also don't want, I don't confuse the commission, right? So now we're presenting something that's not right.
Whoever was just speaking, you're confusing the commission right now, so maybe you could take your sidebar offline?
Dan, whoever, Dan, if you're operating this, can you please mute whoever is speaking right now?
I already did. He's not muted.
Thank you.
That's the applicant.
I muted him already. He should be muted already.
Yeah, that was the applicant.
Yes, I already muted him already, sorry. So we're missing.
I linked back the exact same way. Go to webinar. Are you okay with this?
No, it looks perfect. It has your informations on it. Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Tay, and then it's some Commissioner DeCarty coming. Doran is Commissioner DeCarty coming.
I've not heard anything to the contrary.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Kennedy. Out of curiosity, who bumped us from Zoom?
Library Commission. They, they're meeting at 6:30. Yes. They're meeting so at 6:30, so we can't kick them out because since they was early than us. And I'm so sorry that I asked Judy about it, and we forgot to turn off the Zoom reminder. I apologize for that.
Yeah, it's just that most of us have problems with webinar because it's just, it's just not, it's awesome. It's not a great, it's just not a great platform. So like, for me, I can hear, if I often have to turn my video off because the band, for some reason, it didn't, my computer does not like go to webinar at all. And I've tried it on several different, I only have Dell's, so it might be a Dell issue. Um, but, so it's a little, it's a little challenging.
All right, Commissioner DeCarty, we have the same issue here. So I'm gonna resend you the link. So you have my name on it, so I'm gonna resend you the link. And use the one that, everyone probably used the one that I sent from the email, but everyone should receive their own invite. So can you log out and log back in, Commissioner DeCarty?
So I overheated with go to meeting, so my camera's gonna be on and off.
Yeah, I have the same problem, so I may have to turn my camera off for part of the meeting as well.
I think it's across the board, right, that it's, it opted, it does, it's suboptimal for most of our operating systems, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have, I mean, we have no choice. Normally, the library on a Thursday, but for some reason, I don't know how we end up with having the same day.
I don't know how the manager should get priority. That's the funny thing.
Agreed. Exactly. I was trying to avoid saying.
Well, the issue is they never use go to webinar because they started their commission after us. So the only two commission that use go to webinar were CC and PC. And the rest started out with a Zoom application. They have no, we have no other choice but to go to, go to webinar. I'm sorry.
Time check. It is 7:03.
Okay, so are we waiting for Commissioner DeCarty?
So it seems Commissioner DeCarty might just need to click his video.
There it is.
All right. Okay, so are we ready?
There it is.
Are you good? Okay, here we go.
Of, Mr. Barnes? Okay, we can't hear you. You might want to just turn on your microphone, make sure we can hear you now, so we don't have to worry about it later.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair DeCarty.
Good evening.
Mr. Kennedy. Commissioner Harris.
Good evening.
Mr. Riggs.
Present.
And Commissioner Tate.
Here.
It looks like we're all present and accounted for. This end tomorrow, do we have reports and announcements?
Yes, good evening, Chair Doran and Commissioners. And so tomorrow, the City Council has the 2021-2022 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan on the agenda for their City Council meeting, and that's for adoption of the resolutions. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have, I have one update. I noticed the website for the Planning Commission doesn't have our new officers, and I'm sure that Commissioner Riggs is ready to relinquish the crown, so I think if you update that, the correspondence will get addressed correctly.
I'll do that.
Um, so we'll move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items that are listed on the agenda. Therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Mr. Tapia, do we have any hands raised or any public comments?
Yes, Chair Doran, it looks like we do have two comments, two commenters who would like to speak at this time. I will go ahead and introduce them in the order that they came in.
I'd just like to remind the speakers that this is for general public comment. There will be an opportunity later to give public comments on the specific items that are on our agenda. So hopefully, these are general public comments. Go ahead.
Okay, I will go ahead and introduce the first speaker. So as a reminder, if you can just please state your first and your last name, so Victoria Robledo, Robledo, forgive me if I mispronounce your name. You should have the ability to activate your microphone on your, on your control panel.
There, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good evening. Thank you so much, Commissioners. My name is Victoria Robledo. I'm a resident of Bellhaven. And I'm also on the Community Outreach and Engagement Committee. So my opinion right now is my personal opinion as a resident. I just wanted to mention a few items in terms of the amenities for the proposed units that are gonna be built over Constitution and Jefferson. And one is that I hope consideration to the rental store space be made financially accessible to small businesses and owners of potential renters of space there. Also, that the stores and shops be somewhat culturally relevant to the surrounding communities, specifically Bellhaven. And also, that when it comes to rental and units to be sold, that I hope that they could adopt some type of a plan to prioritize residents of Bellhaven and those that have been forced to leave and would like to come back. And then my last input is that I strongly believe that in order to prevent continued, I like this term, segregated living patterns such as housing and storefront space, that it has to be accessible to those most greatly impacted by the developments of these 441 market rate units with a mere, I think, I think, I'm not sure the percentage for low income. And that it'd also be very much considered, you know, the consideration for those most greatly impacted by this development, which is to me, Bellhaven residents. So thank you. Appreciate your time. That's, that's me. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next comment, I would like to just make the observation that that was a comment on an item on our agenda. It was actually on that order. For the next speaker, I would like to remind them that this is comment on general public comments or items not on our agenda. That's where we are right now. So if you have a general comment on an item not on the agenda tonight, please go ahead.
Okay, Chair Doran, I will go ahead and introduce the next speaker. So again, if you can just please state your first and last name in the political jurisdiction in which you live in or your organizational affiliation. So at this time, Pam Jones, you should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Yes, good evening. This is Pam Jones, resident in Menlo Park, District One. And I'd like to apologize, Chair Doran, because I did look at the website thinking it was Commissioner Riggs. I hope you can hear and understand me. I normally use my phone to call in and speak, but this, this system did, apparently does not allow me to use my phone to call in. So we'll make the best of this. Two things, and that was my first comment. It's about using this platform. If you can only listen by phone, but you can't make a comment by phone, you know, it's star nine for the other system, then this really limits what your public can do. Because some people only use phones and call in, so we may be losing people tonight because they look at this agenda and it doesn't look like they're able to, to use their phone to make a public comment. This was brought to my attention by several residents. And as you know, I'm always trying to help people understand that government is not rocket science and that there's a way to access all of this information. My second comment has to do with the staff report for the F2. Over the week, 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 weekend, I tried to assess two of the hyperlinks, O and Q. They took me to a page that had a picture of the, the old Chamber of Commerce. It said City of Menlo Park, and it asked me to put in my, my city log information, which I have. So I tried to log in, and it wouldn't let me. So I recognized now, I was told that now one of the links, Q, has been corrected, but O has not. And that the information I'm looking for is embedded in the document. It's just makes it a little challenging for those of us that like to do things systematic. So thank you, and it's, this is just, you know, an observation. I know that everybody is under a lot of stress. But it's important that we make things simple for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we are allowed to provide general information under public comment, so I will just reflect on that. This go to meeting was kind of a last minute choice because we had a conflict with another city commission, and we have a limited number of Zoom licenses. So hopefully, this will not be repeated, I think. There's a lot of agreement on the commission that Zoom is much preferable. Mr. Tapia, do we have any other public comments or any other hands raised?
Yes, Chair Riggs, we do have an additional commenter. So at this time, I will go ahead and introduce them. And forgive me if I do mispronounce your name. Nahesi, you should have the ability to activate your microphone. Again, if you can just please state your first and last name in the political jurisdiction in which you live in.
Absolutely. I'm Nahesi Olavie. I live in the Willows. And I identify as African American. I'm saying that because obviously, over the last year and a half, we've had, you know, an awakening, so to speak. And by this being the Planning Commission, I'm just wondering, what's the plan for inclusive housing? I'm not seeing it. I'm seeing just, you know, a continuous issue of blocking people from housing or, you know, overcrowding Bellhaven. It is very heartbreaking to live in. It's almost like, you know, being black in Menlo Park. Every other day, it feels like you're getting a kick to your chest because you're, you're only reminded of what you won't have, what lanes will not be open. And I'm just, you know, urging the planning committee to really be meaningful and thoughtful about these projects. You know, I'm not seeing any large apartments for, you know, lower income families that have children. So I'm just wondering, is the plan to, you know, eliminate all, you know, lower income folks from Menlo Park? Or is the plan to include everyone? If it is, I think it's time for you guys to step up and show it. Let's put some action behind all these intentions, you know? What link does the Planning Commission have with the housing element? You know, what is the relationship there? It, we should be working in sync, not in separate categories. So I'm just trying to get a handle on, you know, my position in this city, if I belong in this city, and will I be able to stay in this city? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia, any other hands raised?
At this time, Chair Doran, there are no additional commenters. Oh, excuse me, Doran, I spoke too soon. It does look like we do have one additional commenter right at this time.
Okay, let's go ahead with that one.
Okay, so at this time, I will go ahead and introduce Sudi, forgive me if I mispronounced it.
It's correct, Sudi, and I just wanna, I was, got a little bit confused. Is it appropriate to comment on F2 or do we still wait?
You should wait. We'll have it up.
Okay, so I apologize. I will reserve my time for when the topic comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Tapia?
Yes, Chair Riggs, looks like we do have another commenter, and we'll go ahead and introduce him. So Sue, you should have the ability to activate your microphone. Again, if you can just please state your first and last name in the political jurisdiction in which you live in or, or organizational affiliation.
Thank you. I just realized that if we have an opportunity to speak during F2, I'll wait for that time period as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Tapia?
Looks like that was the last one, Chair Doran. No more additional comments.
Thank you. I would like to note for the record that you pronounced my name correctly that time. Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. We only have one item on the consent calendar tonight, the approval of minutes from the May 24, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have comments or additions to the minutes that would require them to be pulled from the consent calendar? I don't see any. Would someone like to make a motion to approve? Commissioner DeCarty's moved to approve. We have a second. I'm not seeing or hearing a second. Okay, Commissioner Kennedy seconded. Um, I think that I'm not seeing all the commissions at the same time on the screen, so I'm gonna pull the commissioners for a vote on this rather than just do a voice for a handout. Commissioner Barnes? Looks like a yes.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty? Yes. Commissioner Harris?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy? It's a yes. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tate? So the consent calendar with the minutes are approved with six votes in favor and one abstention. Move to public hearing. At this time, we have, on F1, we have a use permit by Ying Min Lee at 824-826 Partridge Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish existing one-story duplex and construct two new two-story, single-family residences and a detached side-loading, one-car garage on a substandard lot with respect to lot width, with, in the R2 low-density apartment zoning district. 824-826 Partridge Avenue. The proposal includes a use permit request to allow the detached garage to be in the front half of the lot and administrative review of a tentative parcel map to subdivide the project into two condominium units. I believe we have we have Mr. Turner for this staff report. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Good evening, Chair Doran and Planning Commissioners. We did have one last minute email to update you on. We received an email from the neighbor immediately to the right of the subject property at 810 Partridge Avenue. They expressed some concerns with privacy and windows looking into their yard and immediately across from the second-story windows of, of their property. They also expressed concerns with the amount of natural light that would be lost due to this project. With that, I don't have any other updates to the staff report, but I'm willing to take questions at this time.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Turner at this time? Don't see any. So do we have the applicant or a representative of the applicant here tonight? Are they going to make a presentation?
Yes, Rick Hartman from Home Tech Architecture.
Go ahead.
I'm Rick from Home Tech Architecture. This two-unit project is very similar in format to several up and down the street that we've done. This owner has built, I think, five or six of these, very high-quality finishes, interior, exterior. Landscaping is very nicely done. So this is really kind of another one. In, in our, in all of the ones that we do, we're very careful that the second-story windows are very small and off to the sides. The, the primary views will be front and rear and not to the sides because we do expect to protect the privacy of all of the neighbors. The neighbor on the right does have some significant trees there. But you'll see from the elevations on A3, that's unit one is on A3, and let's see, unit two is on A7. The only tall window on the side is the stair landing window. That's a tall window, and that's gonna be obscured. So it's, it's noted on the elevations and in the window scheduled to be obscured. The owner usually obscures all the bathroom windows anyway. But the large windows are all on the first floor, not the second. And the, the views to the street or the front and the, and the views to the rear are the larger fire escape windows for the bedrooms. And those are really the only really large windows that we have on the second floor is for those fire escape locations. After that, we want to be careful that we don't break any rules anywhere at all, and we don't want to have any variances or exceptions. The, the location of the garage, it, it's kind of gone back and forth. Some projects, it had to be an exception, some it had to be variance, and some said, don't worry about it. So I'm not sure the 50% line does hit the garage, so it's a, it's a matter of however that one works. But it's, it's kind of needed for our, you know, to get, to get all the parking in neatly and to get the turning radius into all these parking stalls. But it is the 50% line on A1, you'll see the 50% line does go right through the garage. So it's not 100% behind the 50% line. And that's, I guess that's it. Whatever questions you might have.
Okay, yes, at this time, if the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, this is the time to do that. We'll then go to public comment and return it to the dais or discussion. Do we have questions?
Can I make an observation now? Can I make an observation now, or should I wait till later?
I think you should wait. This is really for clarifying.
No, it's not.
Mr. Vice Chair DeCarty?
Yeah, to the applicant, thank you for your presentation and for the information. Can you share just a little bit more about how you did public outreach? How often you did the outreach, what you heard from neighbors? What that looked like?
Yes, we did do one outreach and with the notices, it's in the description letter of who showed up and which addresses showed up. But we really only had positive comments. There wasn't anything really outstanding or upset about anything that we could see. So they, mostly they just asked questions about it. But just, just the one meeting, just the one meeting. Yeah.
No further questions? Okay, at this time, I would like to open it up to public comment on this agenda item specifically. Mr. Tapia, do we have any hands raised?
Yes, Chair Dorn, it looks like we do have a couple of commenters. I will go ahead and introduce them as they came in. So I will go ahead and introduce the first public commenter. Again, if you can just please state your first and last name, political jurisdiction or organizational affiliation that you live in or affiliated with. And just as a reminder, there is a three-minute time limit. So at this time, Anna Furnas, Furnas, forgive me if I mispronounced it. You should have the ability to activate your microphone on your control panel.
Hello, my name is Anna Furnas. We live at 810 Partridge, next door to the proposed development. As I mentioned in the email that the man mentioned before, we are concerned about how close the proposed development is to our home. There's much more room on the other side and given the way the sun tracks, we're a little confused as to why it is on this side. We have a small backyard that is already prone to mold and does have trees blocking some of the light, but if that house goes up, we will have no light in our backyard whatsoever. We do have two small children and as for the privacy concerns, even if there aren't windows there during the construction, I'm concerned about my daughter's window is facing directly. It's large and it faces directly onto that area. Besides that, the master bedroom or the master bathroom, also the only window in there faces onto that area and it just would have a really negative effect on our property for all this light to be blocked and for privacy. And it just seems like the other side of the lot has substantially more space, both between the neighbor, the next-door neighbor and the other, you know, items on the layout. We are concerned about the effect of the construction on the neighborhood. We do have an elderly, a low-income elderly community living across the street and many of them use the street for parking overnight and during the day. And having a large amount of traffic will impinge, I believe it will impinge there coming and going. And the other concern was just, you know, it's a substandard lot as mentioned and it's taking advantage of the low-density apartment zoning to fit in, you know, these two large, single-family residences. And because they're so large, we just don't feel that it's, you know, advisable to place them directly next to our home. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia, do we have any other hands raised?
Yes, Chair Dorn, I will go ahead and introduce the next speaker. So it's like we have Corey Smith. Again, if you can just please state your first and last name for the record, political jurisdiction which you live in or organizational affiliation and there is a three-minute time limit. So Corey Smith, you should have the ability to activate your microphone within your control panel. Okay. Looks like there was a correction, Chair Dorn. Looks like we're not looking to speak at this time.
Okay, do we have anyone else who wants to speak at this time?
So at this time I am not seeing any other commenters.
Okay. In case, I'll close public comment and bring it back to our virtual dais and open it up to comments and questions from the commission. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, so it's really an observation. So Partridge and Cambridge, the streets are next to each other, are really one of the, and a few others in the allied arts, sort of downtown approximate in the park, are the few streets that have duplexes. And duplexes make it possible for folks whom, you know, who are in regular businesses, who have regular jobs, if they are able to, at certain levels, afford the rent. And by removing this critical infrastructure from this city, we are destroying access to single-family homes, to duplexes are hard, right? They're seen because it's two units back-to-back, they have a joining wall, but you're destroying that opportunity for families to have a house and a yard. And similar to what all of our, many of our public commenters have said tonight around, this is, you know, the same thing is happening in Bellhaven and it's now creeping, it's now creeping here and into these, into these other neighborhoods and it's going to continue. And I do believe that it is our job to stave off the destruction of this city, at least the housing stock, that makes it possible for families who are not in venture capital, who are not in tech, who do not have high-power, you know, jobs with enormous bonuses and making seven figures to actually live in this community. It is, it's destructive and it's sad. And that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Do we have other commissioners who should speak? Mr. Vice Chair DeCarty?
Mr. Turner, could you just, to the first comment from Ms. Furnas, on the daylight plane, is the right slide to look at here D8, RD8 or there A4? Is that right? Or is there a better one to look at it in terms of the concern about blocking light?
The the page number in the plan set would be page A, she A3, the elevations for the front unit. It looks like it's page 17 in the staff report.
Great, thanks. And there's nothing unique about this in terms of, I mean, it meets all of the requirements and with some room to spare for our daylight plane requirements, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then a question for the applicant. So can you address the question about just the orientation of the buildings with a driveway on the left and not the right and how you made that decision?
Yeah, there is a very large tree in the front. It's fairly centered, the large tree that we wanted to design around. I believe the driveway would be to the west is where the driveway is located today. I'd also mentioned the new buildings are actually about six inches further away from the east property line than what the new buildings are. The new buildings are further away than what the existing was. It was actually a little less than five feet, we're going to be over five feet. But the driveway, both of our neighbors, their driveways are away from this parcel. So neither neighbor has a driveway on our property line. They're further, they're on the opposite. So both sides, the neighbors are at their setback or in one case, a little less than what the setback should be. But, you know, we oriented it that the driveway would stay where the driveway is because that is actually healthier for the trees, not to introduce new driveway in a different location. But it did start with the trees and the fact the driveway is already there.
Great, thank you.
That's where we did, thanks.
And then just to clarify, what's currently there is essentially a duplex, two units on the property and you're now putting in two units on the property.
Correct, right, it's duplex at full market rate. They're one stories, so this is quite different being a two-story. And they both have two-car garages. So there's really no place to park unless you're parking in the garage on the duplexes there today.
And so, yeah, that's helpful. I'm sorry, I cut you off, I apologize.
Oh, well, per requirements, we have a one-car garage and one car outside parking for each unit. So we have two cars available for each unit.
And then I guess my last question is for Mr. Turner. Is it feasible for a owner of a property of this dimension in this neighborhood to put two duplexes on this lot? How it is zoned and how it is configured? So could we replace one duplex with two duplexes? And if not, is it because it's how it's zoned or is it because of parking? Or what would the limiting factor be?
When you say two duplexes, do you mean like four units total? So keep the existing duplex? Right, so the zoning of the R2 zoning has a lower density essentially than like an R2 or an R4 zoning district. So two units is the maximum number of units on this property. There are other mechanisms like the state ADU laws and our ADU ordinance to put, essentially, they'd be able to put two more units on the slot, but it wouldn't be a, like two separate duplexes for four units.
Great, thank you, I appreciate the clarification. That's it for my questions, thank you Chair Dorn.
Do you have anyone else that would like to speak on this? I don't see anyone. Do I have a motion? Commissioner DeCarty, Vice Chair DeCarty?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, the motion approved as submitted has been made and seconded. I'll call a roll. Commissioner Barnes? That's a raised hand, yes. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And I will vote in the affirmative, so the motion carries six to one. I'd like to move on to item F2 on our agenda. You'll forgive me because just introducing the items is going to take some time. The lengthy page. Application from Andrew Morcos, 141 Jefferson Drive and 180186 Constitution Drive, Menlo Uptown. Reuse permit, architectural control, major subdivision, low-market-rate BMR housing agreement and associated environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Proposed project would redevelop three parcels with 483 multifamily dwelling units comprised of 441 rental units, split between two seven-story apartment buildings with above-grade two-story parking garages integrated into those buildings and approximately 2,940 square feet of commercial uses located on the ground floor of one of the proposed buildings and 42 for-sale townhome-style condominium units located in the RMUB residential mixed-use bonus zoning district. The proposed project would have approximately 475,896 square feet total gross floor area, GFA, and a floor area ratio, FAR, approximately 224.9% residential uses and 1.4% for commercial units, uses. The proposal includes a request for an increase in height, density, and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The applicant is proposing two options for its community amenity proposal with an alternative to provide the commercial space to a nonprofit to use for administrative offices and an alternative to provide the commercial space to a healthcare nonprofit to use as an urgent care or express care health center. Both community amenity alternatives include additional contributions to either a community land trust or a healthcare network. The proposed project would include 67 below-market-rate BMR real units and six for-sale townhome BMR units for a total of 73 BMR units or approximately 15.1% of the total 483 proposed dwelling units in compliance with the city's BMR ordinance requirements. The project site currently contains three single-story office and industrial buildings that would be demolished. The project also includes a hazardous materials use permit request to allow for diesel generators to operate automated parking systems, critical building resources in the event of an emergency. The final environmental impact report, EIR, pursuant to CEQA, was released on June 11, 2021. The final EIR for the proposed project does not identify any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts that would result from the implementation of the proposed project. The final EIR identifies potentially significant environmental impacts that can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level, LTS/M, in the following categories: air quality and noise. The final EIR identifies less-than-significant LTS environmental impacts in the following categories: population and housing, transportation, greenhouse gas emissions. The city previously prepared an initial study for the proposed project that determined the following topic areas have no impacts, less-than-significant impacts, or less-than-significant impacts with mitigation measures, including applicable mitigation measures from the Connect Menlo EIR, aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, noise, construction period, groundboard vibration and aircraft-related noise, public services, recreation, utilities and service systems, tribal cultural resources, wildfire. The draft EIR was circulated for an extended 60-day public review from December 4, 2020 through February 2, 2021. And the planning commission held a public hearing on the draft EIR at a meeting on January 11, 2021. The final EIR includes responses to all substantive comments received on the draft EIR. The project location does not contain a toxic site pursuant to section 6596.2 of the government code. Okay, now I'm going to catch my breath for about five minutes. We have, I believe, Mr. Smith on this report. Do you have anything to add?
Good evening, planning commissioners and Chair Dorn. Thanks for going through that lengthy discussion. I actually do have a number of items to add, so bear with me as I work through these. Then I'll give you a brief presentation. So I think first I'll start with items of correspondence that we have received on the projects and we had a number that came in today and over the course of the afternoon. So I'll briefly touch on them. The first item of correspondence we received was, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on this one, was on behalf of the David D. Bohannon Organization from Scott Bohannon. And the request was for the planning commission to forego action on the project so that they could better understand conditions along the shared property line between Menlo Uptown and 101 Jefferson Drive, which David D. Bohannon Organization owns. There is a new retaining wall that's proposed along the property line adjacent to the fire access road that would be proposed from Menlo Uptown. And the letter expressed concerns with elevating the site to meet the city's sea-level-rise requirements, which do require that the first floor be two feet above the base flood elevation and also concerns about importing fill on the site to raise it. The letter questions whether this was appropriately analyzed in the CEQA process and if hydrology, stormwater flow and the structural soundness of the wall would be ensured. Staff did have an opportunity to review the information in the letter and the plans since they came in before the weekend. And we note that the elevation of the site to comply with city requirements was disclosed in the initial study for the project, specifically in section 3.10 hydrology and water quality. The project would decrease the amount of impervious surfaces on the site and runoff would be directed to an 18-inch storm drain main located below Constitution Drive. The project would be required to comply with all of the city's requirements that would mean no net increase in the rate or amount of stormwater runoff that would happen post-project compared to the current conditions. And then furthermore, proposed conditions 1EE1001TT and others would ensure that the project adequately manages and treats stormwater runoff from the project. We did take a look at the proposed plans and at this conceptual stage, staff believes that the proposed retaining walls could feasibly support staff believes that the proposed retaining walls could feasibly support the proposed development of the Menlo Uptown project, but more detailed structural calculations and drawings would need to be provided at the building permit stage to, to confirm that and would be required of the applicant. So that was the, the first item of correspondence. There are 11 others. Number two is from Jackie Leonard Dimmick, and it indicates a desired, desire that there should be a balance of jobs and housing in the area. Companies should hire people who live near jobs instead of bringing new employees from out of the area to help improve the balance in the community. The comment from Victoria Robledo, opposing new housing in Bell Haven and expressing concerns regarding pollution, noise, and traffic that would be caused by the project. The, the email also requests that housing units for the project be reduced to 275 BMR units and indicates that areas west of 101 should be the focus of housing development in the community. Item four is from Kelly Rem from Lozano Smith Attorneys at Law on behalf of the Sequoia Union High School District, objecting to the final EIR, claiming that the city council is the final acting body on the project because of the tentative map, so approval by the planning commission is not final under CEQA, and claims that the EIR failed to adequately describe the environmental setting in the, for the schools and improperly relied on the Connect Menlo EIR and reliance of SB 50 payment of school impact fees as part of mitigations for the project. Commenter five is Pam Jones, and she expressed issues with the community amenities list that, as it currently exists, preferred, preferred amenities are more affordable housing, Bell Haven sidewalk replacements, utility undergrounding in Bell Haven, or money to the in-lu fee that the city council is in the process of establishing for the Bayfront area. Commenter six is Cheryl Bins, expressing concerns about housing density in District 1 and a request for community amenities to actually be placed within the residential areas of Bell Haven, more equitable housing development throughout Menlo Park, and a request to modify Connect Menlo general plan update. Item seven was from Jeff Blanford, who requested that there be more additional affordable housing incorporated into the project. Item eight is from Lorena Cuffy, and she said that she appreciates the applicant's interest and commitment to listen to what is needed and appreciated that the applicant held community meetings on the project and believes that it will be an asset to the community and hopes that it is approved. Item nine was from C. Conley for Silicon Valley Leadership Group, expressing support for the project, indicating that it's a prime housing location and offering a variety of BMR and market rate options to the community. Item 10 was from Nazahia Larvia, and this comment letter indicates that the project can use longstanding housing inequities in the community and questions the project in relation to the city's housing element goals and how it will address the housing crisis in the area. And item 11 is from Luisa Buada for the Ravenswood Family Health Network, indicating support for the project and the urgent care center. That's community amenity option for the project and indicates that it would provide, provide access for healthcare to persons regardless of their ability to pay. There was a 12th item that came in from Brad Senna, who is also from Lozano Smith Attorneys at Law, and it pretty closely mirrored the letter that was received from Kelly Rem on behalf of Sequoia Union objecting to the, the final EIR. So those were the 12 items of correspondence that, that we received.
Thank you.
I have a, I'll move into staff presentation, if I may, or if there's any questions beforehand, happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for the presentation? I have one early question, but just a request. The staff report is excellent and comprehensive, as they always are, but this one ran to 496 pages, and it's hard for me to actually scroll through it, especially when we're in GoToMeeting. GoToMeeting seems to use a lot of bandwidth, so I'd just like to ask, we have very long staff reports in the future. If we could get hyperlinks to, you know, a table of contents to the various sections, that will help in navigating, help me quite a bit, but go ahead.
Yes, and, and staff, we, we understand that there are concerns about the length and the, the size of the PDF, and so I think we can explore some ways to help at least break that up a little bit, so it's more manageable to view electronically in the future. So I do appreciate that comment, and we will, will work on a better format going forward. So I don't think I need to reintroduce the project. This is Menlo Uptown, 141 Jefferson Drive, 180 and 186 Constitution Drive. This would be the final EIR certification and, and project entitlements public hearing. So on this slide, you can see the project site outlined in red here. It is a 4.83-acre site, and it is zoned RMUB. You can see these areas in orange are RMUB zoned, and blue, there's a blue dashed line that runs sort of through the center of the site, which is designated as a Paseo location on the city's zoning map, which would be provided as part of the project. The project would be redevelopment of the site, and it would result in 483 residential units, which would be 441 rentals into apartment buildings and 42 for-sale townhomes on the site. There's also 2,940 square feet of commercial space that would be dedicated to a community amenity for the project, and 73 of the 483 residential units would be for below-market rate households. 67 of those would be rentals, and six would be townhomes. And as I mentioned, the project would provide community amenities to construct at the bonus level of development so for increases in height, density, floor area ratio. And the applicant has proposed multiple community amenity options. I would note that staff is recommending approval of an urgent care center that would be operated by the Ravenswood Family Health Network, and the proposed amenity is included in the current council-approved community amenities list as under Social Services Medical Center. So the breakdown of costs for that amenity, if chosen, would be $8.9 million, which is the, the assessed value of the amenity toward the construction and build-out of the urgent care space, special medical equipment such as x-ray machines or, or other specialized medical equipment that would be used on the site, and then a direct contribution to fund operations of the organization. So that would, that would add up to $8.9 million, and I will give you a little bit more of a breakdown in a, in a few minutes here. So finally, I would add that the project is subject to the requirements of SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. The project sponsor did convert that application to an SB 330 application in January of 2020. SB 330 was designed to remove barriers to the development of housing projects across the state, and some key features include shortening the timeframe of housing development project review under the Permit Streamlining Act. It does limit the number of public meetings on a housing project to no more than five hearings. If an SB 330 project complies with all applicable objective general plan zoning ordinance and subdivision standards and criteria that are in effect when the application is, is deemed complete, then the city cannot deny or impose a condition that the project be developed at a lower density unless the city makes written findings with evidence that there would be some sort of specific adverse impact on public health or safety that couldn't be mitigated throughout the project process. So the recommended format for the remainder of the hearing would be staff introduction, which I'm providing to you now, and then a presentation by the EIR consultant, followed by a presentation by the applicant, and then opening for public comments, then commissioner questions, and then commissioner deliberation and a vote on the, the entitlements. And the recommended actions for this evening would be to adopt a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report. It's referred to as the FEIR, adopting mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopting the CEQA findings, and adopting a resolution approving the use permit, architectural control permit, below-market rate housing agreement, community amenities operating covenant, and a resolution to recommend to the city council approval of a vesting tentative map for a major subdivision. And these above, the actions listed above would be subject to conditions of approval, which were provided in Attachment B, Exhibit G. So before I close out my presentation, there are a few more items that I, I need to mention. Some are some clarifications to attachments in the staff report, so. And I would also, before we go into those clarifications, I would note that if the commission is to vote in the affirmative on this project, there do need to be four members of the commission approving the project. So I think we have with, I think we have all seven here, so it shouldn't be an issue, but four members do need to vote in the affirmative on this project if the commission wishes to approve. And so I will go through a couple of revisions that I'd like to read into the record. The first would be for the community amenities operating covenant. Section six, and I'm on page B42 of the, the staff report packet. So section six would be a revision. The staff report packet was updated to modify the tenant improvements value that was previously identified as $2,558,000 to $1,837,500. And that is to correct an error that was made in essentially, we needed to reduce this amount because BAE, the city's consultant, identified that there was some double counting of a tenant improvement allowance for the project. And so part of that would come out of this tenant improvements value. And so that value would be 1,837,500. The other change here is that at the end of Section six, or the, the first paragraph of Section six, it identifies a financial contribution value of $1,425,376, and then a direct in-lu payment to the city in the amount of $300,000. That was placed there in error. What it should be is, there, there would be no in-lu fee. The applicant did not propose that, so it was inadvertently included here. What it would be is a direct financial contribution to Ravenswood Family Health Network of $1,725,376. So that in-lu fee value would essentially be rolled into the, the financial contribution value instead. And then finally, condition two in. Let me just pull up my notes on that. Condition two in reads, "Prior to occupancy of the first apartment building to be constructed on the site, the applicant shall construct the publicly accessible open space for the project to the satisfaction of the building, engineering, planning, and transportation divisions." Staff is recommending that the the condition be modified to read as follows. "Prior to occupancy of the first apartment building to be constructed on the site, the applicant shall construct the Paseo and publicly accessible open space on the apartment building parcels for the project to the satisfaction of the building, engineering, planning, and transportation divisions. The remainder of the publicly accessible open space on the townhome parcel shall be constructed prior to occupancy of the first townhome building on the site." So essentially, what we're looking to do with that condition is better specify what components of publicly accessible open space should be provided with which buildings. And so that was a desire there to clarify that. I believe there are a few other minor changes to the staff report, and I will turn it over to the city attorney to read those into the record at this time.
Thank you. I, I will actually read a few final revisions that were requested by the applicant and/or were typographical or administrative revisions that staff feels appropriate, and, and I can go through those at the end of the evening. They don't substantively change the project in a significant manner. And so I will go through those after the planning commission has had a chance to deliberate.
Okay, so Mr. Smith, I believe you suggested the EIR consultant go next?
Yes, if there are any initial clarifications or questions by staff, I'd be happy to answer now, but we can also hold that for later in the meeting, whatever your preference is.
Well, if we have clarifying questions, it looks like Commissioner Barnes does. Go ahead. Commissioner Barnes, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Thank you. I think that's the third time I've done that this evening. Sorry about that. I would like to flag either now or a little bit later in the process. I want to understand some of the mechanics of the community amenity discussion, and more specifically, you know, we're being asked to approve the operating covenant, which is part of the use permit. And, you know, as we get into this project, a clear delineation of a bifurcation of how it is we have a discussion about the community amenity. It can't be carved out from discussion of the project, so we don't run into some of the same things we ran into last time, which is, we have a project, we're discussing the project, we're, you know, we're talking about the specifics of it. Then over here, we've got the community amenity bucket, and the ability to come to a, an agreement on what the community amenity may or may not be, how that interplays into the overall project approval. So said more succinctly, I want to make sure that I understand the roadmap for how this works, because I don't want to see what happened last time. And this community amenity discussion that we're having is layered. There's a couple of different alternatives. There's going to be a number of different points of view. There may be, there may be amendments and then other friendly amendments to how to further modify what the numbers may look like. And I don't want to bore the train wreck in terms of, you know, us discussing the project and us discussing the community amenity and what the mechanics are for that. So whether that's now or that's later, I want to be sure to flag that particular issue. The other thing I would like to confirm is that when we talk about approving the BMR agreement, the, the W BMR agreement is for the Table 11 Alternative BMR Proposal that the staff proposes. So that is, that Table 11 Alternative Proposal is, in fact, the default proposal that would be what the BMR approval would be for. So those are two, two points. Thank you.
And Chair Doran, if I may respond. So I do think it would be good to save discussions about the community amenity until after the applicant's presentation, because they will, I think, give you a, a little bit more of an explanation about the two alternatives. I gave you our recommendation, but I think it would be fair to hear the alternative before launching into that discussion. But it is, it is integral to the entire project, and, and obviously, the community amenity is essential for bonus level development. So, so you're correct there about it being important to discuss early on. The second second thing that I would, would note is that the BMR proposal, staff is recommending the, the alternative. staff is recommending the, the alternative, which is a mix of incomes for the rental units. It is in the commission's discretion though, if, if you would like to determine that the other alternative, the, the original proposal is better, which is all low income rental units for the project. So the way that it is written is, is for staff's preferred alternative, but there is discretion there to choose another path if the commission would like.
Great. Thank you so much.
We have any other clarifying questions at this time? Okay, shall we go to the EIR consultants?
Good evening. I'm Teresa Wallace with LSA, the city's consultant for environmental review of the project. I'm going to go over the elements of the final EIR that is under consideration for certification tonight, beginning with a bit of background on the overall environmental review process. And I apologize, many of you have heard a version of this, so please bear with me. My slides will advance. Okay, so this slide shows the overall timeline for environmental review, which began when the city issued a notice of preparation or an NOP notifying interested parties and responsible agencies that an EIR would be prepared. An initial study was also prepared and circulated with the NOP for review. All public comments received during the forty-six day scooping period were considered during preparation of the draft EIR. The city and LSA and our technical specialists then prepared the draft EIR, which I will summarize in the upcoming slides. After the close of the sixty day public comment period on February second, we prepared written responses to each substantive comment received on the adequacy of the EIR analysis and what's referred to as the response to comments document, which I'll also go over in a minute. The response to comments or RTC document was published and available for review on June eleventh or 10 days before this hearing, as is required by the California Environmental Quality Act. So the environmental analysis for this project tiers from the Connect Menlo final EIR. The Connect Menlo EIR provided a program level of analysis of the development potential envisioned for the entire city, including the increased development potential in the bayfront area where the project site is located. And the CIR evaluated the impacts of approximately 2.3 million square feet of non-residential space, 400 hotel rooms and 4,500 residential units. The proposed project fits within the development assumptions of the Connect Menlo final EIR. Also, a settlement agreement with the city of East Palo Alto requires certain projects that tier from the Connect Menlo final EIR, including those utilizing bonus level development like the proposed project to conduct a focused CIR with regard to housing and transportation. Environmental review of the project also complies with the terms of the settlement agreement. So as I mentioned before, an initial study was circulated with the notice that an EIR would be prepared. Based on the conclusions of the initial study, the topics shown on the slide were not further evaluated because the project is not anticipated to result in significant effect related to these issue topics, or because the initial study found that these topic areas were adequately addressed through the program level analysis in Connect Menlo. Based on the analysis in the initial study, the topics of population and housing, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and noise were further evaluated in the focus CIR. And this slide gives an overview of the findings for each topic. And the main takeaway is that no significant unavoidable effects were identified and all impacts can be mitigated. So the EIR also evaluated a range of alternatives to the project with, with the objective of avoiding or reducing potential impacts. While a number of alternatives were considered, the EIR included a full analysis of three alternatives, including the Sequa required no project alternative and two development alternatives as summarized on the slide. Ultimately, it was determined that in terms of environmental impact, the proposed project itself would be the superior alternative because it would not result in any significant and unavoidable impact. As you can see on this slide, both of the development alternatives would result in significant and unavoidable impacts related to vehicle miles traveled, whereas the proposed project would not. And that's because of a considerably large office space square footage that would occur under those alternatives. So that concludes the overview of the draft EIR findings and on to the response to comments document. So this slide gets an overview of the comments, the components, excuse me, of the document and what is included. Five letters were received during the sixty day comment period. One from Caltrans, one from the Sequoia Union High School District and three from individuals. The school district letter cited a number of concerns related to impacts on schools. And the letter from Caltrans acknowledges the BMT analysis and that it was conducted consistent with OPR's technical advisory. The letters from individuals outlined overall concerns with developments occurring in the city, including suggestions for the community amenity space and truck access at adjacent businesses. The commission also provided comments during the draft EIR hearing and asked a number of clarifying questions. All of these comments were responded to in writing in the response to comments document. That document also includes minor corrections and clarifications to the draft EIR that were made in response to the comments or that were initiated by staff. So with completion of the response to comments document, LSA and city staff determined that none of the comments on the draft EIR disclose any new significant information. No new significant or substantially more severe environmental impacts have been identified. And no new feasible mitigation measures or alternatives have been identified, which were are considerably different from others previously analyzed and that the draft EIR did not require recirculation. So as I mentioned before, we're now considering the final EIR, which includes the draft EIR and the response to comments document, as well as the mitigation monitoring and reporting program or the MMRP. The MMRP identifies all applicable mitigation measures from the initial study and the draft EIR, including applicable measures from the Connect Menlo final EIR and any project specific measures. The project sponsor will be required to comply with these measures when implementing the project. And the MMRP identifies the timing and oversight responsibilities for each measure. So lastly, one final point that I want to make is about the adequacy of the final EIR. The planning commission is being asked to decide whether or not the final EIR is adequate. The standard for adequacy of an EIR is shown on the slide. The basic purpose of Sequa, which is a state law, is to inform the public and decision makers of the environmental effects of a project, identify ways in which adverse environmental effects can be avoided or reduced, avoid impacts to the environment where feasible, and to disclose to the public the reasons why the lead agency may approve a project which has adverse environmental effects. The adequacy of an EIR is determined in terms of what is reasonably feasible in light of factors such as the magnitude of the project, the severity of its likely environmental impacts and the geographic scope of the project. The planning commission is being asked to determine if the basic purpose of Sequa has been fulfilled and if, based on your own independent judgment, the EIR is adequate. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer questions and we also have the transportation consultants with us this evening as well.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Did you have a presentation, Mr. Kilsen, the transportation Alice?
No, Damian is here to answer questions.
Okay. Do we have any clarifying questions on the EIR or on transportation? Vice Chair DeCarty.
I went first before Commissioner Riggs had his hand up concurrently.
Okay.
I'll defer to Commissioner Riggs.
Want to go first?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. We're all here until the end. Yes, I, I do have a question through the chair for Mr. Smith. There are a number of mitigations for traffic and transportation proposed on page fourteen of the staff report. And could you just summarize for all of us in the millions watching us if, how many of those elements are conditions of approval tonight?
Sure. Let me just quickly scroll up to that page. So this is in, this is in reference to the level of service intersection improvements. Is that correct?
That is so, yes.
Okay. So before I discuss that, I just want to clarify for everyone that level of service is not a Sequa threshold anymore. And so this is fully independent of the, the Sequa mitigations and requirements for the project. These are really a requirement that's in place because of the city's traffic, but the TIA guidelines that we have. And so traffic impact analysis guidelines and the tables on page thirteen and fourteen list, I'm sorry, mostly on pages fourteen, fifteen, sixteen of the staff report list potential intersection improvements that were evaluated by staff as part of conditions of approval for the project. And staff is recommending the intersection improvements based on a feasibility evaluation that was performed. We are recommending five near term plus project conditions and or cumulative intersection improvement conditions as part of the project. So that'd be a total of nine, nine intersection improvements that staff is recommending. And our recommendation is based on, again, as I said, the feasibility analysis, looking at is, is the project or the proposed intersection, if it's something that would increase the amount of VNT, vehicle miles traveled, obviously that's not something that we would, we would want to promote. And so that staff has stripped out any of those potential conditions for things that are intersection improvements that are more like adding turn pockets or restriping or more minor conditions like that, that could be accomplished with an existing rights of way. Staff is recommending approval of those. And if, if there are specific intersections that, that we're concerned about, I'm happy to talk a little bit more about that. We do also have transportation staff available for, for the more detailed questions as well if needed.
All right. Thank you. And to clarify, cumulative improvements would be improvements that would involve a contribution from this project, but on the assumption that there will be contributions elsewhere in order to total the, the needed funds. Is that correct?
Right. Cumulative, the cumulative project intersection improvements would be not just because of this particular project, but all of the projects that are being contemplated or currently under development, their contribution to changes in intersection conditions. Each of these would be assessed a certain percentage based on the trips that they would contribute to that intersection.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And my apologies, Mr. Smith is correct that this is not actually an EIR related subject, even though it happens to be in the staff report. So I apologize for the timing.
Okay, Vice Chair DeCarty, I think you're next up.
This is a follow-up on the EIR. I will, I'll say it's difficult to get all of the written responses at the last minute and trying to go through those today prior to this meeting. The one I wanted to reference was this from Tide Academy and the school district following up again in their responses to the EIR. And I think I would like it if you could help understand the, how this EIR is nested in the program EIR from Connect Memo from five years ago. And the specific question that was raised and then again from the comment from the school district is the cumulative potential for more students in the, in the district. And how to look at or assess this individual project and the impacts relative to, I think, when we put Connect Menlo together as a community, that what we've seen is a pace and scale of development and the type of development that was perhaps a lot faster than anticipated. And so how do we, as a planning commission in a given project, receive the EIR, which is about this given project, but yet represent a community that is well aware of the other types of developments that have been built and are proposed? And the perception of the cumulative impacts of those multiple projects? And for example, this concern about students and the cost for the school district, they're not fully captured. And I'd be glad to try to restate that more eloquently, but perhaps that was good enough for you to give us some insight on the relationship between this EIR, the program EIR, this project's impacts and the cumulative impacts of multiple projects in a short period of time.
I guess I'll, I'll attempt to answer that. So like I mentioned before, Connect Menlo, the final EIR, that evaluated 4,500 residential units. And it looked at impact to the school district and other school districts that serve the area. And so this project and many other projects that you're considering fit within the parameters of what was evaluated, the development potential that was evaluated in that final EIR. And so, you know, that program EIR was intended to identify the impact to schools from developments like the proposed project. And with respect to reaching the development potential sooner than what was perhaps anticipated at the time that Connect Menlo was prepared, the analysis and the assumptions related to impacts on schools in Connect Menlo wasn't based on incremental development. And there was no limit on the pace of development and when that could occur. So we believe and we've provided really thorough responses to the school district letter that all impacts related to schools that they've brought up in the letter they submitted on the draft EIR and the EIR or in the letter they sent today have been addressed and thoroughly evaluated. And again, payment of development fees have been determined by the state to be adequate and complete mitigation for impact to schools when it comes to addressing fiscal impacts, capacity issues and the like. I don't know if that really answers your question.
No, I thought that was very helpful. So to try to play back just briefly, the original program EIR was comprehensive and was agnostic about the pace of development. And at that time then, And at that time, then, would have presented to the community a comprehensive look at the full impact of development in that geographic region that was covered by that program EIR. Is that a way of trying to restate what you just said?
Yes, that is a more concise description of what I just said.
Terrific. That's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Barnes had a hand raise earlier. Do you still have questions?
I did not. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't see the whole commission now on my screen. Does anyone else have questions? The EIR. Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any. So I think it's time to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, commissioners and Chair Doran. Just make sure I have. My name is Andrew Morcos, and I am the Senior Development Director for Gray Star in Menlo Park. I'm here to present Menlo Uptown for entitlement approval. And Menlo Uptown is our second project in Menlo Park in our first housing development following the adoption of Connect Memo. So on this slide, we have a map showing the location of Menlo Uptown. I thought I'd start by just briefly going over our other projects as well. Our completed project along Menlo Park, in addition to our three projects in entitlements, will provide the city of Menlo Park with over 1,100 multifamily units. Over 140 of these will be affordable BMRs. And for comparison, Menlo Park currently has 477 BMR rental units. So these projects would increase the number of BMR affordable units by over 28%. Menlo Portal is our second project in the Connect Memo plan with 335 units and 35,000 square feet of non-residential space. And that project's entitlement approval hearing is hopefully scheduled for the month of July. Menlo Flats is our third project and consists of 158 units, and its draft EIR should be released in the next handful of months. Onto Menlo Uptown, the project we're here to discuss today. I want to emphasize that we've worked diligently to ensure the project is 100% compliant with all objective standards. The project consists of 441 multifamily rental apartments and 42 for sale townhomes. The project is 100% housing and will replace 110,000 square feet of existing office industrial buildings. 15% of the project or 73 homes will be below market rate and located onsite. As far as the community amenity, we have a slide coming up that will go through this in more detail. But just to summarize, we have two options available. Option one is building space and tenant improvements and free rent for Samaritan House and funds for a local community land trust called Valley Community Land Trust or VCLT. The second option is building space, tenant improvements, equipment, and operating startup funds for and free rent for Ravenswood Family Health Network to open an urgent care in the just under 3,000 square feet located on our site. As far as open space, we are providing 24,000 square feet of publicly accessible open space, which is 80% more than is required. And we are including a Paseo as open space, which will connect Jefferson to Constitution and provide pedestrian and bike access and walking bike access to the largest employers in Menlo Park. From an environmental perspective, this project is achieving amongst the most ambitious environmental standards in the country with lead gold, substantial EV charging opportunities, and all-electric infrastructure. As previously mentioned, one of the most important factors, features of our project is the community amenity. These options, two options, were driven by the Bell Haven community. And we're looking forward to delivering one of them. Option one was centered around affordable housing. And the it was centered around a community land trust called VCLT and a partner of the city of Menlo Parks in providing support services called Samaritan House. VCLT would receive $3.5 million in funds to purchase homes in Bell Haven and create affordable housing. And Samaritan House would receive just under 3,000 square feet of building space in our project and build out costs for that space and free rent. Option two is our funds for the Ravenswood Family Health Network. This falls into the medical office bucket in the community amenity list. This slide is a bit dated. We've corrected it with the city. There is not a city in lieu payment. It is just building space and funds for the Ravenswood Family Health Network. To summarize below, just under 3,000 square feet of space would be used to build out an urgent care. Tenant improvements would total 1.8 million. Specialty equipment would total 882,000. And the funds to support operations would be the 1.4 million plus the 300,000 that is listed here as city in lieu payment incorrectly. These options were, again, driven by the community. Option one, the affordable housing option, affordable housing has been something I've heard continuously across our three in-person outreach meetings, community meetings, and on various one-on-one calls that I've had with community members. It was also identified as one of the key ways to manage displacement in the report Investment and Disinvestment as Neighbors. It was created by UC Berkeley and Y Plan and funded by Facebook. Option two, the Ravenswood Urgent Care is clearly an important amenity, given the current health crisis. Ravenswood Health Network doesn't doesn't turn anyone away and doesn't engage in bill collection. For those unable to pay, there's a sliding scale option. Even undocumented patients without insurance pay up to $20 per visit or as much as they're able to pay. Urgent Care does include basic pharmaceuticals. And again, as I mentioned, it is on the amenity list that was approved by in Connect Memo. And it's also been a amenity that's been discussed by the City Council Subcommittee on Community Amenities. Moving on to our BMR proposal, so our project includes 73 below-market rate units, 67 of which are rental multifamily units, and six homes are townhomes for sale. Initially, our proposal was all all the rental units would be at the low-income BMR level. When we went to Housing Commission, Housing Commission requested that we prepare an equivalent alternative. And so you'll see here, this is the second option and the one that has been recommended by staff, which includes seven very low-income units, 23 low-income units, and 37 moderate units. An important feature of all of these BMR proposals is that they're capped, BMR rents are capped at 75% of comparable market rate rents, and they are distributed throughout the project and are indistinguishable from market rate units. We have two requests of Planning Commission based on the staff report that that was published. Regarding the community amenity default fee on page 26 and 27 of the staff report, we request a $2,282,000 reduction in the $8.9 million default fee in the community amenity cover. The default fee is required if Ravenswood Urgent Care cannot continue operation and a replacement operator cannot or use cannot be found. So in essence, another way of saying it's a termination fee. Our perspective is that the default fee should consist of the real estate value and tenant improvements for the space totaling 6,618,000 and should exclude the budget that goes directly to Ravenswood for equipment and operating startup costs totaling 2,282,000. Those dollars cannot be recouped and are not related to the real estate. And the important thing here is that I think as a city, it's incumbent not to create disincentives for applicants and developers to provide onsite community amenities. And I think having a fee that includes costs or funds that are going directly to a nonprofit should be excluded from those from a default fee. Lastly, on the community amenity default fee is it currently includes a growth rate that is in line with our assessed value growth rate. In our view, if anything, there should be a depreciation as time goes on. But we are would be satisfied with just eliminating a growth rate on the default fee. The second point that we want to call to attention for Planning Commission is the level of service intersection improvements. Our position is that the improvements outside of the TIF program should be excluded from Gray Star responsibility. These are on page 12 to 17 of the staff report. Specifically, the Willow and Coleman and Willow and Gilbert intersections require road widening, utility relocation, signal modification, restriping, and are likely to exceed $1.4 million on top of a million-dollar TIF fee that's required separately. Our understanding of policy is that there's a focus on multimodal transportation improvements, and we feel the Willow and Coleman and Willow and Gilbert intersection improvement conditions of approval are unreasonable requirements of this project. I'd like to summarize this portion of our presentation by saying thank you to the community and to elected and appointed officials who've taken countless hours at our public meetings, at our community meetings, at one-on-one meetings, at meetings like this to help mold and help us evolve this project. We've been working on this for over four years and have really tried to incorporate all the feedback that we've received. I genuinely care about this community and hope that everyone feels heard and like they've had a positive impact on this project. With that, I'd like to introduce our team. Clark Manis from Heller Manis is our lead architect on the multifamily. And David Burton from KTGY is the lead on townhomes. Karen Kruliski is from PGA is our landscape architect. And with that, I'll hand it over to Clark to go through the section of the presentation. Clark? I think someone needs to unmute Clark if possible.
We still have Mr. Tapia with us?
Yes, this is Leo with staff. It looks like his microphone is showing is is active. I don't know if it's on Clark's side.
We can't hear you, Clark.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can hear me. Okay, wonderful. Great. Terrific. I took my headphones off. So good evening and thanks, Andrew. Good evening, Chair Doran. Congratulations on being chair and fellow commissioners. Let me first thank you all for your contributions to the design over the course of the many study sessions that we've had together. I certainly think that the evolution of the site and the building designs have benefited greatly. Next. Next slide.
I think.
So in maximizing the residential density and achieving compliance, we have successfully incorporated two multifamily buildings and six townhouse buildings. If you have some specific questions on the townhouses, David Burton, as Andrew said, is available to answer that. Next. So the site plan that Andrew has touched on really does a great job, we believe, in maximizing reflecting publicly accessible open space and seamlessly integrating both of the building types. Karen, after my presentation, we'll follow and focus on the landscape and the Paseo experience that's enhanced on the Constitution frontage. And the aerial rendering at the corner there really does demonstrate what we believe is one of the important organizing principles of the Paseo and the relationship of the public open space to the buildings. Next. One more, please. So in taking you through the two multifamily building designs, we want to reflect the importance of the Constitution and Jefferson Street frontages and the Paseo's relationship to them. As you've heard earlier, the sea-level rise criteria did elevate the ground levels with lobbies and active uses, including the neighborhood benefit spaces. Mechanized parking system's been concealed within the building. And one of the things that we have worked heavily on is providing bicycle parking along the Paseo front. Next. Second floor of the building then just accommodates residential units, both on the Independence and Constitution floor. As I said earlier, the mechanized parking is buried in the midst of the buildings. Next. So one of the the elements that we evolved early in the discussion, probably in the earliest days in working with planning staff, the building plan form ended up being an I-shaped building form. And in order to maximize and accommodate the breakdown of the mastings and create elevated courtyards of different depths, what you see is really a flip in reversal of both building plans in terms of providing diversity in the way they get seen in the context. And one of the things that I think is very clear in this is the way that we looked at all aspects and all facades of the buildings in order to provide a differentiation. Next. So on the building materials, we're very hard and again with staff and with your comments, the buildings, the multifamily buildings combine a brick tone strain screen with light-colored, smooth cement plaster. The building corners, as you see at the at the left side of this perspective, provides an orientation and a definition at the site intersections, which we find are important. We've emphasized and incorporated them in a vertically expression and bookended the base expression in the middle and the setbacks above. In order to create additional beside character, we've added balconies and bay windows, as you can see on both the Paseo and the street frontages. Next. And on the compatibility with the entire project in terms of design, one of the things that the townhouse buildings did is we looked at unifying the overall composition and site character for a unified expression in the project. The complementary fiber rain screens, the cement plaster, and the large-scale windows further reinforce what we believe is an integrated site facade expression. Next. And lastly, the enlarged townhouse site plan does illustrate how we work very hard to integrate the pedestrian and vehicular circulation. And on the left side, it would be the multifamily, and so projects work very well together in the way we've organized that. So let me now turn to Karen and have her share with you the various public open space elements that we've worked very hard to knit together. Next.
Hey, is there a next slide? A little slow. Well, I'll start while that's happening. I think I was expecting a slide showing both sites, but I'll work with what's shown. Thank you, Clark, and good evening, commissioners. As a reminder, we've presented this site before, but just want to reiterate some of the organizing principles of the design. The Uptown site is a cohesive site, integrating and connecting both the multifamily with the townhome site via the Paseo. We've worked hard to create a site that fosters those connections between the two and make sure that it shares the public open space between the two developments, crossing the property boundaries. Both sites are woven and connected together and include a multi-use lawn, shade trees, seating elements, and connectivity to the adjacent neighborhoods. We truly believe we've managed to create a connected site between the townhome and the multifamily site, as well as with their surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you for having the design development team present tonight, and we look forward to your review. Thank you.
Thank you. So does that conclude the applicant's presentation?
Yes.
I have one clarifying question, and I expect some of my fellow commissioners will have questions as well. Mr. Morcos, could you go back to slide three, I believe it was, on the open space? Yeah, so you mentioned 80% more open space than required, but I believe you also mentioned that that included the Paseo, and I don't think that the Paseo counts as open space. It's a separate requirement of the development. Can you tell me how much open space you have if you don't count the Paseo?
Through the chair, I would ask that a staff comment on that. Actually, I don't know what our open space is net of the Paseo. We've always included the Paseo in our open space calculation.
Okay, Mr. Smith, can you help us on that?
Yeah. So I don't have the exact numbers right in front of me, but I think I can give you a ballpark idea. So we do count a Paseo towards publicly accessible open space, but in this instance, for this project, there is considerably more than just the Paseo that's being provided here. So I think that the Paseo for this project is somewhere around 12,000 or 13,000 square feet of open space, and they're proposing 23,673 square feet.
Okay, so I was wrong on that. You can count the Paseo as part of the required open space.
Yes.
I thought we heard differently in an earlier stage.
No, but we do consider the Paseo to be a part of their calculation for that amount.
Okay. Well, I will just say in passing, I do like putting the open space next to the Paseo, and I think I might have asked for that in earlier iterations, so I think that came out very nicely. Do we have further clarifying questions from the commission?
I have one, Michael. I actually have a couple of questions. The first one has to do with the target market. With the Gray Star project over on Haven Avenue, I recall the rents range from like $3,100 to $4,400 for one bedroom to four bedroom, I'm sorry, one bedroom to three-bedroom units. Are you targeting a similar rental position, albeit that you don't have the same mix of units?
That's right. Alon Menlo Park, the project you're referencing, was more two bedrooms. About 50% of the units were two bedrooms, and 50% were one bedrooms, and there were a handful of three bedrooms. I think it's fair to use Alon Menlo Park as a comparable for rent perspective. Yes.
All right, thank you. That might help the public understand that while these are not the $7,000 units of up on Hamilton, I believe, built maybe eight years ago or something. They obviously aren't going to be three bedrooms for 2,000, but they are, I think, what the Valley at the moment considers affordable. And another question had to do with the response to FEMA and to sea level rise, which I think come at you from two different directions. So the site is generally elevated, and I understand that the Paseo would be elevated as well. The question has been raised by the adjacent property owner, that is, the property inside the L, about how your raised elevation meets the not raised elevation of your neighbor. And presumably, that's a retaining wall. Do you have a graphic that would help us understand? A site section is what I'm used to looking at, although as an architect, I'm perhaps more inclined toward those graphics, but something that will help us understand if there is an impact or what kind of coordination you intend with that adjacent space.
Yeah, we do have a drawing. If we could bring up our presentation, we're prepared to discuss this. It's actually, you know, the comment letter referenced the property to the west of 141 Jefferson at 101 Jefferson, and it also referenced 165 Jefferson, which is another one of our projects that we call Menlo Flats. So I don't know if you can see my mouse, but 165 Jefferson is here, and 101 Jefferson is this property line here. So I will go now to some elevations that we have describing the retaining wall and fence detail. So you'll see this is the elevation from 101 Jefferson. This is the retaining wall, and it is topped by a four-foot metal fence panel. And I have some pictures of that. Just want to show you that at most along 101 Jefferson, the height of the retaining wall is 2'4"6" at the tallest, but it varies along with the grade. So you'll see here it's 1'11" at this part of the property line. So that is 101 Jefferson. I'll just go through one, hopefully, 165 Jefferson, and show some pictures of that as well. I apologize, it froze on me. So along 165 Jefferson, which is to the southeast of our property, there's a bit more of a grade difference between that property and Menlo Uptown. At the tallest point, there would be a five-foot retaining wall, and it would be topped with a four-foot fence. And then at the bottom right-hand corner here, I have a picture of the retaining wall that has been, sorry, designed. And so it is a black ground face material. We think it looks nice, and it is topped with a fence that looks similar to this detail here.
And again, the 165 Jefferson is Gray Star property?
It is not. It is, we are entitled, we are entitling the site, however, we are under contract on that site.
Oh, okay. All right, and in both cases, those elevations are views from the adjacent properties, not from within your site?
That's right.
All right, thank you very much. That helps me visualize what the issue is.
Of course. I'll just add one small additional thing, which is that the CMU and the fence, the CMU starts four inches from the property line, so there is a bit of a gap from the property line to the CMU.
Will that assure that the excavation, well, it's not excavation, except for the foundation, but the excavation is within the property line, so it doesn't undermine whatever facility might be adjacent?
There will be no work done along, on any other property than our own?
I would expect that, but I thought it would be handy to put that out verbally. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs.
Do you have any other clarifying questions from the commission? Not seeing any. I know that we have people who've been waiting to give public comments on this. I'd like to move to that now.
Good evening, Chair Doran. And for those who are patiently waiting, at this time, if you have a public comment on the right-hand side of your screen, you should see a hand icon. If you do click on that, that'll notify staff that you do have a comment at this time. And additionally, there is a green microphone, excuse me, there is a microphone icon. Once we do invite you to speak, at that point, you will then be able to activate that microphone to audibly speak for the commission. And just as a reminder for all the potential public speakers, if you can just please state your first and last name for the record, the political jurisdiction in which you live in, or your organizational affiliation, and then the last item to note is that there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. So if I may, Chair Doran, I will go ahead and introduce the first speaker as they came in.
Please.
Okay. So forgive me beforehand if I mispronounce any names, but I will go ahead and introduce Sessi Conley. You should have the ability to activate your microphone. Sessi, you are showing as active on your microphone. It may be an issue on your side, but I guess for the purposes of this, we can come back to Sessi if that's helpful, Chair Doran.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Do we have other hands raised?
Yes. So sorry, Sessi, we'll come back to you once we can figure out that situation. So in the meantime, we will go on to Corey Smith. You should have the ability to activate your microphone by clicking on that microphone icon on your control panel.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Corey Smith, and I am speaking on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. We are a regional nonprofit that advocates for more homes at all levels of affordability, and I am here tonight to speak in strong support of the Menlo Uptown proposal. You know, we often get caught up in these conversations about units and FARs and all of these wonky numbers, but at the end of the day, what we're talking about here is homes for people, families, senior citizens, and everybody else that wants to call the wonderful city of Menlo Park home. We are really excited how the project really emphasizes a creation of community available open space. It will provide the opportunity to showcase work from local artists and then other neighborhood-serving real tale or a cafe perhaps to help activate the street. Additionally, we're very thrilled that the project is setting a high environmental target with lead gold equivalency, planning for all-electric buildings, 15% EVSE parking, a lot of bike parking, Cal Green fixtures, and Energy Star appliances. But I don't want to, most importantly, but after four years of thoughtful community engagement, the proposal that you have in front of you is really incredible, and I want to thank staff and the project team for working so hard to get it to this point, as well as all of the community members that provided input over these last few years. And we urge you to continue moving the project forward today and certifying the EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe we have other speakers waiting, Mr. Tapia?
Yes, so at this time, I'm going to try to go back to Sessi Conley. Hopefully, Sessi's microphone is working, so Sessi, you should have the ability to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Good evening, my name is Sessi Conley from the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. On behalf of our more than 350 members, we support the approval of the Menlo Park Uptown project. Menlo Uptown is a great opportunity to create more housing, including 15% affordable, which is so sorely needed in our entire region. It looks like a lot of community outreach was done, and a lot of work has been put in this over the years, and I'll just keep it brief since you have a lot of comments, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have other speakers?
Yes, we do, Chair Doran. We'll go ahead and introduce the next speaker. Forgive me if I mispronounced this. Delia Perla, again, if you can just please state your first and last name and where you live, or your organizational affiliation for the record.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Delia Perla. I live in Bellhaven. I'm also a volunteer with the VCLT Community Land Trust. We support this project. Many people have already stated, even in the beginning during the general comments, how important housing is to individuals who have been displaced over decades of time, and I have borne witness of that, families, people, faces, children needing to relocate. And I won't go into all the stories that I can tell, but we support the DMR proposal and for a mixed affordability as well. We support the community amenity, going to support VCLT and the Samaritan House as well. And there's a variety of reasons why I believe it should go to VCLT and Samaritan House, but primarily, there's a supportive element that we don't always have time to discuss when people are displaced and then they come back into the fold and find a pathway into housing. And those levels of support sometimes are needed, but very anonymous. And it's for that reason that I believe it's a great idea to consider the VCLT and the Samaritan House for that community amenity. Thank you for your time and just for the extensive time that this project has come to the community and listened to voices, to people with tons of meetings around it, and it's very evident that so many people are in support of this. Thank you. Please approve the project.
Thank you. Can we go to the next one?
Yes, Chair Doran, I will go ahead and introduce- Yes, Chair Doran. I will go ahead and introduce Leora Tonwato-Ross. Again, forgive me if I mispronounced that, and if you can just please state your first and last name and where you live, or your organizational affiliation. You should have the ability to speak now.
Thank you. My name is Leora Tonwato-Ross. I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Our mission is to work with communities and their leaders to create and preserve quality, affordable homes. I want to echo the points of the speakers who came before me to talk about how housing is sorely needed. From my own personal experience, you know, single-family homes, either to rent them or to own them, would be something that would not be possible for my family, given our income. And so, proposals like this that are multifamily for rent are sometimes the, the only options that people have. And given the global hub of jobs that we are, and the, the great economic success that we have here, I, you know, the Housing Leadership Council wants this to be a place that people can live, and, and live in a way that doesn't require them to be millionaires. So, thanks, everyone, for the work that you've done on this proposal for the past four years, and we hope that it moves forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more, Mr. Tapia?
Yes, we do, Chair Doran. We'll go ahead, go on to the next one. So, Lynn Bramlett, you should have the ability to activate your microphone now.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lynn Bramlett, resident of District Three, and I'm speaking for myself. I believe that the Menlo Uptown project should go before the City Council for their review. This project, along with others in the District One Development Pipeline, is putting the city at increased risk of litigation following a major eruption of the Hayward Fault. On May 8th, 2018, the then-City Council heard a USGS presentation on the Hayward Scenario. That scenario is a scientifically realistic, but not worst-case one of the consequences following a 7.0 magnitude eruption of the Hayward Fault. The presentation went into explicit detail regarding the likelihood of the Hayward Fault eruption and its impact to Menlo Park. That night, the city was warned about the possibility of litigation should residents find out the city could have done more to mitigate for this probable disaster, but it did not. The Connect Menlo primary document should have been reviewed and updated in light of what was learned May 8th, 2018. However, they were not. One is the Connect Menlo Program Level EIR. The other is the precursor Geology, Soils, and Seismicity section of the Connect Menlo Land Use Element. This section brushed, brushed over the potential catastrophic risk from the Hayward Fault eruption by stating that the fault does not lie directly under Menlo Park. While surface fault rupture is not considered a direct consequence to Menlo Park, the Hayward Fault eruption poses other potential catastrophic consequences to us, especially District One. The Geology, Soils, and Seismicity section also states that because the city has general plan goals, policies, and programs, these would serve to minimize potential adverse risks from earthquakes. However, these policies and goals are not necessarily being worked and/or enforced. The same document also lists various reports and tracking mechanisms that warrant a review to see if they exist and how they are being used to increase safe building in District One. It's time for the council to consider a safe growth audit, to identify gaps in the city's Connect Menlo Growth Guidance Documents and Instruments, and to identify improvements that can and should be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Doran, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the next speaker. So, Matt Regan, you should have the ability to activate your microphone. Again, just if you can please state your first and last name, where you live, or your organizational affiliation.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Doran, my name's Matt Regan. I'm representing the Bay Area Council and 350 of the largest employers in the Bay Area, including several in Menlo Park. And speaking in support of a great project that's in front of you tonight, you have a great developer in Gray Star. You have a world-class architect in Heller Manus, and an all-around wonderful project that has been the fruit of four years of labor and cooperation, collaboration with the community, the developer, and the city. I sat on, I, I currently sit on A-BIG's Regional Planning Committee, and I sat on the Rena Methodology Committee for most of the last two years. And just for a little historical perspective, in, in the 2017-14 Rena cycle, Menlo Park got an allocation of 993 units. In the 2015-23 cycle, that mysteriously dropped to 655 units. But in the upcoming cycle, the 2023-31 cycle, which this project will fall into, your Rena allocation is going to be in the ballpark of 3,000 units. And as the developer said, this is an SB 330 project. It's compliant with all objective standards, with your general plan and housing element. This is a project you must approve. It's one that, if you do not approve, in all likelihood will be taken out of your jurisdiction. We're seeing a trend in Sacramento of laws being promoted and passed that promote housing that meets standard set, objective standard set by cities, and gives those, those project sponsors a fair fighting chance to get those projects approved. So, I would urge you tonight to, to take the project that's in front of you and, and use your discretion to approve it. It is a good project, and it is one that will take a big bite out of that very large Rena number that's coming your way. It's a good project. Please approve it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So, at this time, Chair Doran, I will go ahead and, go ahead and introduce Nahesi Alarvia. Forgive me if I mispronounced it. You should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Hi. I guess I'm just a little confused on some of the transparency with, with this project. It does not, it seems to be doing the opposite of what the housing element is allegedly supposed to be doing right now. It doesn't seem like there's any really low-income housing for people with multiple children. Like even like, if they have two children in two different age groups, or two different genders in different age groups, there's no housing for that group of people. I think that the community may not understand that still, this is going to still leave a huge disparity of people that still cannot afford to live there. I want to know what population is this project speaking to? What are their occupations? You know, what, what, who are these people moving in here besides, you know, still, the, the same population of people that are higher earning? So, I, I just urge people to look at the, the data and the actual needs of the community, and address a plan that addresses the disparities, not addresses the continued lack of sensitivity to what redlining has done. I, I just don't really understand how no one is looking at the bigger picture here, looking at the data, looking at the numbers. And even just, the word moderate is used in two different ways. What you just presented a little while ago said moderate income, but a lot of the other documents I've read says above moderate. So, like, which is it? Are we, is it moderate income or above moderate? Because above moderate does not, it's not included with BMR. So, I'm just hoping that, that there's more transparency with what this is actually going to do. And is it really a good project? And when you say good, good for who? Let's outline who this will be good for. Thank you. Nahiz Elaria.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, I will go ahead and introduce Pam Jones. Pam, you should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Yes, thank you. Pam Jones, again, resident of Menlo Park, the Bellhaven neighborhood. I want to reiterate a couple of points in the email that I sent you. And I also want to say that it absolutely breaks my heart that we are discussing a project like this on the SRI land. The SRI land, you know, it's up to 40 units. We're, over here, we're doing 100 units. But with that said, I wonder if this project would have taken four years had it not been pulled so that it would qualify for SB 30, 330. I also want to say that, yes, I believe in CLTs, but not this type of CLT that wants to increase housing density with their ADUs and junior accessory units. This is classic segregation. This is the result of historical redlining. This is a result of gentrification. And Menlo Park needs to, to have, look at this through another lens. I do support the Ravenswood Clinic. They have shown themselves to be advocates for this community with the work that they did with COVID testing, as well as COVID vaccinations. The other thing that I did want to say about this project is it's interesting how the Connect Menlo General Plan was done under the current housing element. But nothing got built. So, those projects that came up under the current housing element now get to shift to the new one. So, the reality is, Menlo Park has done nothing to address the over 30,000 jobs that they were able to bring in here right away. Again, I know that we're really stuck with this project. And it is unfortunate that the money for this doesn't go in directly into the community of Bellhaven, so it addresses things like sidewalks that are not ADA compliant, so that we can begin underground utilities. But most important, this money could be used to subsidize all levels of below-market units over in the facility. They could subsidize over 40 units for at least 10 years by putting this money into a different kind of project. So, for the future, maybe these are some things that will be considered, so that we'll really be addressing the housing, jobs imbalance, particularly what Menlo Park created itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other speakers?
Yes, we do, Chair Doran. So, at this time, I will go ahead and introduce Scott Bohannon. As a reminder, if you can just please state your first and last name, and the political jurisdiction in which you live in, or your organizational affiliation. So, Scott, you should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Commissioners. Scott Bohannon, David D. Bohannon Organization. We own 101 Jefferson, and we represent the property 165 Jefferson. And indeed, we are in negotiations with Gray Star regarding 165 Jefferson project. And we've submitted comments related to our, our concerns just recently, when we were made aware of some of the conditions of those property line issues that we've brought to your attention. Want to let you know, we participated in Connect Menlo and supported it. And we, we were generally in support of, of all its findings and, and what it's doing. We, we, we actually generally really like Gray Star's project. We like their community benefits. We like the affordable housing options, urgent care, whatever the Commission, Commission finds best. The, the, our, our primary objections or issues are related to property line, and, and are contained in our letter. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have further public comments?
Yes, we do, Chair Doran. So, at this time, I will go ahead and introduce Sudhi Tronsen. You should have the ability to speak now.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sudhi Tronsen from District Four, and while I'm on the Housing Element Engagement Committee, I'm offering the following as a resident. Projects with higher density continue to be approved in limited locations, leading to further separation of our communities. Furthermore, there does not appear to be a cohesive plan, or at least none that is communicated to the community, about how these projects together address or not the critical housing issues. Uptown Project provides 15% total rent plus sale BMR units. However, the ratio of the units based on size are not proportional to non-BMR units. In earlier studies commissioned by the city, overcrowding was shown in the Bellhaven community and other vulnerable neighborhoods. While this project is not technically in Bellhaven, an intended objective has been to provide housing to lower-income families. As is, the disproportionate majority of BMR units for this project are targeted for family sizes of one to two, with no rental units for a family of four, and one rental unit for a family of three. While some cities do provide that BMR units shall have at least the same number of bedrooms as the average unit in the project, that is not the case with how the Uptown Project and some of the others have been deployed in the city. The relevant portions of Chapter 16 of the city requires 15% allocated to BMR, and makes no mention of BMR unit size. However, the city in its below-market rate housing program guidelines states, and I quote, "The city will consider creative proposals for providing lower-cost units available to lower-income households, such as a smaller unit size," end quote. This creative language in the guidelines, and which does not appear to be in the code, continues to lead to disproportionate number for different types of BMR units. Furthermore, the number of BMR units available for sale provide not much of an opportunity to realize the American dream of homeownership. So, while the project provides six sales unit, it's all going to the moderate and over AMI income levels. I respectfully submit that the Menlo Park's guidelines are inconsistent with the purpose for which below-market programs were created, and the city's creative language deprives the families from affordable housing, whether rental or for sale. And as a separate topic, I urge the city to consider that codes, guidelines, and zoning must be written to advance the equitable will and the well-being of the people, and not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia, can you keep them coming?
Yes, Chair Doran. So, at this time, I will go ahead and introduce Sue Connolly. You should have the ability. Sorry, one second. Now, you should have the ability to speak.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I, my name is Sue Connolly. I'm a longtime Menlo Park resident. And I have to comment that I have not been included in the feedback opportunities in the community, and I do try to stay informed. So, I have to say there's kind of a big miss in terms of saying long-term community engagement, just as a data point. I want to thank the Planning Commission for your dedication and care for our community. I'm also representing several neighbors who had to drop off this call, because it's been a little longer than expected. But the net of what I'm requesting is that the entire housing project be dedicated entirely to affordable housing. The 3,000 units of the Rena allocation is actually 3,900. I heard that in a recent council meeting and a housing element meeting. I shouldn't qualify. It was the recent housing element meeting, because you need to have a margin. So, we are not even close to what we need to do, and it's not just for market-rate housing. We need to make sure that we're taking care of the people who have been displaced by the massive overdevelopment east of 101. The community amenities are a very small carrot for the massively negative impact on our community, especially those who have lost housing due to the development. Well, the new, this new housing is only accommodating 15% BMR, and even tacitly, that's not correct, because it's moderate housing. I was reading one of the articles. So, it's, it's just glossing over a very, very serious challenge that we have. And basically, this housing crisis is directly because of the massive office developments with Facebook and Menlo Gateway that have created the affordable housing loss and the high quotas that are now put on the shoulders of Menlo Park, which is previously, you know, a suburban town. This doesn't address the mere 15% BMR that is being done. And frankly, every resident in Menlo Park is already contending with the severe and myriad negative impacts of the massive development in Menlo Gateway, and the soon-to-open 500 Middle and Springline projects in El Camino. And then now, we have to contend with the massive SRI-proposed development and the USGS development. The developers and Facebook must take responsibility and fix the lack of affordable housing in the very development where they're reaping incredible profits. Facebook is reaping billions. The developers reap hundreds of millions. The massive development has a permanent impact in Menlo Park, and I deeply entreat your wisdom and eye to our future. We are killing Menlo Park. We have a responsibility to our seniors, our children, and everyone who is already here in Menlo Park, and we need your help to stop this madness. I am proposing that we do a building moratorium until we can see the impact already of the, the projects that are soon to be opened. And we've, I think we've already reached, if not past, the tipping point. the tipping point of destroying Menlo Park. And it's very easy to kill a community. And as you've seen already, the people who are in the Bellhaven and in many parts of Menlo Park have been driven out of this area. I've also done food deliveries and rental vouchers through a charitable organization to families who are crowding into a single-bedroom apartment, but they'll have multifamilies crammed in there in untenable circumstances. So I'm asking you, and I'm beseeching you, to please help take care of this problem and this inequity that you have and stop the profit-mongering that's clearly happening with the developers, with all due respect, and turn this project into 100% affordable housing. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your consideration.
So at this time, Chair Dorrin. I am not seeing any other comments. So at this point, there are no more public comments.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, everyone, who provided their comments to us tonight. I'd like to now bring it back to the dais for discussion. We have Commissioners who would like to speak. Vice Chair DeCarty.
I actually just have a clarifying question for staff, if I could, through the chair. So in their presentation, Gray Star asked for, I believe, two things. And I, Mr. Smith, I would love your assessment. The first is the request for the reduction in the default fee, I believe, from the materials that we reviewed. That would be if the community amenity that is the Ravenswood Health Clinic was chosen. And I would love your assessment if that's a reasonable request. And then the second was to take out the potential road widening at, I believe, Willow and Coleman and Willow and Gilbert. I also would love your assessment if that's reasonable. And if there's some way to understand what the net reduction in fees would be by taking those out, if in fact, there is a net reduction in fees that they would be paying. If you could clarify on both of those requests, please.
Sure. So I'll start with the first one, the request to reduce the default fee. I'm just going to pull this up very quickly. Bear with me for a second. So I think that potentially it could be a reasonable request, given that there would be certain expenditures that the developer would be making that they couldn't recoup. So once they make these purchases of equipment, that's not something that they'll get back. And for however long that the operator, being Ravenswood Health, is in place on the site, they would be utilizing that equipment and providing services to the community. And so I can see the developer's argument for that particular item as reasonable. For the intersection improvements, I would disagree with their characterization. So I want to be clear that, I think in their presentation, it says something about road widening. And I think in the staff report, it does mention a widening at intersections. These are not, this is not widening in terms of adding a travel lane to a roadway or something that would induce more travel. What we're talking about is adding turn pockets, things that can be accommodated within the existing right-of-way at intersections, things that improve intersection movements, and not inducing additional traffic to an area through expanding roadways. And so I think that, in particular, I want to be clear about that. I would also note that for any of these impacts, or for any of these, I'm not going to call them impacts, for any of these intersection improvements that are not part of the transportation impact fee, if there are other projects that are approved and they're identified as having impacts or effects on the same intersections, then they would have to reimburse the project for their portion of the fees that they were responsible for. So there would be some cost sharing with other applicants, which we think is fair if other projects are approved. And so I think that that's kind of our rationale on why we would request those intersection improvements. We think they're feasible, and the cost could be shared if other projects are approved.
Thank you. Thanks for those two clarifying questions. Chair Dorrin.
Do we have other Commissioners who would like to speak at this time? Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Through the chair, back to Mr. Smith. I was looking at the section which talked about the default fee. Just to understand it further, it's effectively a clawback. It's a city's way, it's a city's version of a clawback for the fault. And these will be my words, and you tell me if I'm misunderstanding it. It's the city's way of making sure that the value of a community amenity is upheld. And if there's things that happen along the way, in other words, default or something, something else, the value of the amenity is still, the city's still made whole for the value of the amenity. So I could see, you know, I see a couple of things. I see the risk associated with the developer and taking on, you know, certain types of amenities that have an operating component to them. You know, as we talked oftentimes about grocery stores and how that would work and who pays for what in the event of keeping that afloat. So I think I'm decent picture that relates to the Health Network. But as it relates to, for instance, the Community Land Trust proposal and seed money, three and a half million dollars' worth of seed money to go out and buy stuff. In that scenario, let me think it through. So there is no possibility of default because the city's money would have been, the city's right to that money would have been invested in real property, and that real property, as long as it's invested, you know, satisfies that component of it. And then the amount for the commercial improvements, in other words, the office space that they're in, would just get occupied by someone else, assuming that there's a taker for that space. So it's different for the land trust because they're buying real property and they're working out of an office. Whereas for Health Network, you have actual fixtures, fixtureization in personal property, so to speak, the commercial business property that would have to, that you couldn't get back. Is that the primary difference between them? Have I called that out correctly?
So I think that, so the way that the operating covenant is written now, it has been designed exclusively for the Ravenswood option. I think there would be a default fee in place if the Commission were to choose one of the other options. And I might ask our city attorney, Neera. I'm hesitant to venture too far into this. But I think if, regardless of which option is selected, there would be a default fee of some kind that we would want to ensure that, for whatever useful life of the amenity that we got, perhaps it's appropriate to reduce that by some amount. But we also do want to ensure that the city is, I think, as you said, made whole for the value that's required.
Yeah, Commissioner Barnes, I think your original description of the purpose of the community amenity fee was spot on. The idea is to, I'm sorry, the default fee. The idea is to ensure that in the event of non-continuation of operation of the proposed amenity, that the city has a means of re-establishing a similar amenity elsewhere in the city or in the similar geographic area so as to recoup the benefit of the bargain for the bonus level development. The value of the bonus level development does not go away with a amenity that ceases to operate. And so the default fee provides some recourse for the city should the amenity cease to operate.
And through the chair, a follow-on question. What is the, what's the thesis behind the escalators in the fee over time?
It's the same, the same idea that I just stated, which is that should the cost to re-implement or re-establish the community amenity increase along with the increased county fair market value and costs over time, that the city would be able to re-establish the amenity based on those increased costs. And that's what the escalator provision accomplishes.
With no credit for the amenity time served, so to speak. So if there was 10 or 15 years of amenity time that was provided to the city, that, there's not a credit, there's not a proration or something associated with that across an effective life of an amenity? There's not that credit for having used it?
Yeah, and it's a good point. The problem with the credit idea is that at some point in the useful life of the community amenity space and then the community amenity tenant improvements and business itself, it will pay for the operator to default. And that is not to suggest that this particular applicant has any sort of intent to do so. But at some point, if the default fee is reduced to buy a certain percentage of contributing years during which the business continued to operate, there is the possibility that it would be more cost-effective to pay the default fee than it would to continue operation. And so the idea is to ensure that the full community amenity value must be paid in the default fee in order to ensure continued operation for the useful life of the bonus level development improvements. But it is, it is a good point, and it's one that we did consider and talk over.
Thank you. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Do we have other Commissioners who would like to speak at this time? Okay, not seeing, oh, well, that was a race. I think I went with DeCarty first last time, so I'm going to go with Commissioner Barnes.
DeCarty's white hair. Oh, wait, wrong guy.
But I think the chair gave it to you, Commissioner Barnes, so take it away.
Well, mine was more clarifying. Are we, Chair, in, out of, where are we in the process? Is this just general opining? We pass clarifying questions and offering?
Clarifying questions, and now you can give your opinions, comments, anything you want to say on the application.
Okay. I defer to my good colleague, Mr. DeCarty, and then I'll take it back in.
All right, I'm happy to go first. I don't need to, and if somebody else would like to, I would be glad to defer. But I am happy to go first. So before us tonight, trying, Mr. Smith, to get this right, that I'm going back to the staff report in the very first page, which has the six elements that you have listed. And I will do my best to go through them and give my opinions on these. First of all, I just want to thank you, Mr. Smith, and the staff for all of the hard work on this. I really appreciate that. I'd also like to thank the applicant for the extensive work and the amount of time they have spent with us through this entire process. On your first one, on make the required findings on the California Environmental Quality Act and certify the final EIR. Yes, I am ready and prepared to do that. I've commented frequently that I am really frustrated with the EIR process and with the way we are bound by a program EIR that is five years old on multiple levels. But for this project, that's not the issue. I also think the mitigation monitoring reporting program is fine. Approving the use permit, architectural control, and the vesting tentative map for a major subdivision, I am prepared to approve all of those. I think the project and the iterations over time have made it accessible, walkable. It doesn't feel like it's imposing as a person who is walking in the neighborhood. I think especially the multifamily, you've done a nice job with that, with all of the elements. I think the townhomes are less successful in that way personally. But, you know, this is just my opinion. And I think the whole project from that standpoint is supportable. And, you know, congratulate you on that work. Appreciate the openness of the open space. Some other projects we've seen with Paseos that end up feeling like narrow walkways, I don't think work as well. I think this one does and that. So I'm prepared to support on those levels. The two places for me are the below-market rate housing, the community amenity operating covenant in those two. And I guess I have some questions in that mix. First of all, I'll just share my opinion, since I think as a planning commissioner, we should do that, which is, I am in favor of density. I'm in favor of denser development. I think that that is what needs to happen in order for us to address the housing and jobs imbalance in our community narrowly and more broadly. I think that density needs to be thought of across our entire community. And I really encourage looking at the housing element. I am hugely supportive of the city council opening up, looking at residential zoning, and asking the question about how that should be per single family and how that should be thought of in the future. So I think opening up the entire city, not necessarily starting from scratch, but to understand how we are, in fact, going to address the issues that are before us right now. And also the fact that right now, we're talking about Bellhaven and a neighborhood that has been historically maligned through redlining, racist loan practices, zoning. Completely agree and believe that we need to do that. On the below-market rate housing in this development, I do have a question for Mr. Marcos, which is, to the very good point made by the member of the, from District Four in her comment. And I apologize that I, I think it was Sudhi, and I'm sorry I didn't get your last name, but I thought it was well said. Just to walk us through a little bit of the concern that the 15% is skewed towards the smaller units as opposed to the larger units. How is that determined? And why is it presented that way?
Yeah, sure. So as is required by the BMR code, we have to provide, you know, as close as possible an equal percentage of the unit type that we're providing as market rate. So in our project, we have 172, excuse me, 104 studios and just under 300 one-bedrooms. We have 33 two-bedrooms and 12 three-bedrooms. And so if you take 15% of each of those, you know, you will get approximately to the breakdown of unit types that we are. you know, you will get approximately to the breakdown of unit types that we are providing in the overall project. And that, you know, just to go through those same numbers again for the BMRs, it turns out it's 17 studios, it's 45 one-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom.
Great, thank you. And then similarly, can you walk through, it's not intuitive that when we sort of took the original BMR proposal, which is at one tier, and now moved it across multiple tiers, why is it that it doesn't look proportional now? Can you explain that?
Yes, so that is because of a provision in the BMR code that says BMR rents cannot exceed 75% of market rate rents. And where that cap is reached the most is the moderate income rents. So say that the, say that the market rate rent for a one-bedroom or two-bedroom is $4,000. The BMR rent per Menlo Park's code can only be up to 75% of that, which is $3,000. In some cases, the moderate income rent is actually more than that. So we can't achieve the full potential of that moderate income unit. And so the way that the subsidy per unit works out, it doesn't allow us to get the equal subsidy for the various unit types. And so we have to, to work out the subsidy such that it's an equivalent alternative, we have to provide a lot more moderate income units, but they're capped at 75% at market rate. So they, a lot of them, most of them, in fact, end up being more like low-income units. Sorry, I'm sure I did a terrible job explaining that, but.
No, that was, that was actually pretty good, and at least to me, pretty helpful, so. Do you mind just walking that through, though? So it's 4,000, let's just say your scenario, it's $4,000 for that moderate unit, which is capped at 3,000, which ends up being low. Like, what's the, what's the rent for low, and what's the rent for very low then?
So the rents for low, in some cases, are capped by that 75% of market rate. And for very low, typically, they aren't. They don't reach that 75% cap. I'll have to pull up the 2020 rents for the different unit types. Apologies, I don't have that at my fingertips.
That's all right. I guess I'm just trying to get at, it would be, maybe can I ask Mr. Smith, can you just explain the staff rationale for why the second proposal is stronger than the first if the goal is to maximize the number of people who would not otherwise be able to afford market-based rent to have access to this opportunity?
Yeah, I think there's, there's multiple ways of looking at it, at the situation, calculating, crunching the numbers. But from staff perspective, we took a look at our current RENA numbers that are required and the area where the city of Menlo Park is most efficient is in moderate income units. And so we saw an ability to fill some of the gap there through provision of units that way. And also, it does address some very low income units as well. I think we get seven, so there's a, there's more of a diversity of BMR unit types, and that's consistent with what the request was from the Housing Commission as well, was to explore, explore that.
Just at the margins, isn't it easier, you know, conceptually in the development, to capture moderate units than low or very low? Or is that just, that's, that's a false assumption?
Meaning attracting?
From our standpoint, trying, you know, different projects come to us if we're trying to get to this balance. This is mostly a question, I think, to, to you, Mr. Smith. But maybe that's, I don't know if you have a quick answer to that or not.
I don't have a quick answer off the top of my head to that, but I do know that for, for whatever reason, I don't have the exact details, but for, for whatever reason, we have not produced moderate units at the levels that, that the state has asked us to in the past.
And so then, but to point out that the, you know, we're, our RENA numbers right now, that this ends in 2022, this project is going to apply in the next round, so we're not going to hit our numbers this time. Is that a fair assessment?
So this project would actually apply under the current RENA cycle?
Yes. Thank you. We still may not hit our numbers, I suppose, this cycle, though. And now we've got this huge increase in the next cycle. So, and there are only so many of these developments and development spaces that are available to us in Menlo Park. So as a, as staff, how do you look at the, those opportunities and then determine that a project like this is actually satisfactory with this number of units, given what we have to come up with?
So are you speaking in terms of the overall number of BMR units that are proposed as part of the project?
Right. So why shouldn't we be saying we need double these units in order to be able to have this project go through? And to understand that, you know, Mr. Marcos and his team may say, we can't afford that, so we're not going to develop it. But if the point is to actually, at a minimum, hit these numbers, which in fact does not help, it doesn't address the overall housing imbalance, but at least at a minimum.
Right.
Somehow I've got the city attorney who's just popped on, so I must have said something.
You know you have to start talking when you see me, huh? No, I think it's a good question, and, and, you know, as you, as you know, we are limited by the BMR ordinance that establishes the required contribution of below-market-rate units based on development size. So that is the maximum that we can impose and require that a developer contribute for their particular development project. And then on top of that, there is a pretty substantial body of law that establishes a reasonable threshold for BMR requirements and Menlo Park's ordinances within that. But, but we wouldn't advise going substantially beyond what is already required in Menlo Park.
So the, so the first answer, the "we" is staff, as opposed to the "we" being the Planning Commission. But the second answer is guidance to the Planning Commission based on the potential of getting sued. Is that the way to look at that?
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, that, as far as the equivalency determinations go, there is latitude. As Tom mentioned in the beginning of his presentation, that there is, the city's BMR guidelines do provide a level of discretion in determining how many units of particular income levels are appropriate. But the overall number of BMR units is capped based on what, or is capped for purposes of the city imposing those units based on the city's BMR ordinance.
All right, thank you. That's helpful. So I'm taking a ton of time here, so I will just say for myself on this, I'm satisfied that this project works with a number of units. And I would defer to the Housing Commission and then the, and then the staff's interpretation that the tiered assessment as opposed to flattish assessment, so I would support that. I think overall, I've made my point that the housing element is huge, and we've got to get that right, and this isn't working for our city. So, and then finally, to the amenity. So to this, to staff, why can't we just, I mean, I get what we have in front of us, but we also have the city council that's moving on a parallel track and they're about ready to do something different. So why can't we just take the entire amount of money and essentially hold it until the city council gets itself squared away, number one? Or number two, anticipating that it's, we could put this into in-loe fees and therefore gives more flexibility to be able to look at options that might actually do a better job at addressing community needs? So is that absolutely off the table for some reason, or could we do that?
I don't know if Nero will jump back in.
Oh, I got her again.
But, so, the, since this is an SB 330 project, and they did contemplate the development of their community amenity in advance of having any certainty about council action going forward. And they did propose something that we view as being on the list, the currently approved list. Then, under SB 330, their project is compliant, and so that's, that's essentially why we're bringing it forward as is. But that's, we were really evaluating the proposal that the applicant has put together and proposed as part of their project. That's where we're limited to.
Yeah, Vice Chair, I think it's another good question. I think there's sort of two answers, one that Tom just mentioned, which is that we are restricted in our discretion as to housing development projects that propose, that, that are designed and proposed in a manner that meets objective development standards. The community amenities program and list, the list itself is an objective development standard. And so for a housing development project that proposes a community amenity that is on the list, the city should, should consider that to be an objective standard that can be met. The other, the other answer to your question is that the community amenities ordinance itself, the various provisions in the municipal code that establish the process for proposing community amenities don't necessarily allow the Planning Commission and Council to select the amenity themselves, but do allow the Planning Commission and Council to review and approve the appropriateness of the proposed amenity. And so here, we have two alternatives that have been proposed, and the Planning Commission has the discretion to determine whether, one, they fall within the list of approved projects, and two, if they are appropriate. As to that second piece, that is a more difficult position to take, given that this is a housing development project. But, but you may still make the determination that a proposed community amenity is or is not on the list of community amenities approved by the city council.
All right, that's very helpful. Thank you. So to Mr. Marcos, I just want to congratulate you. I think these two new proposals are fabulous. I, for a long time in my career, worked at an organization. I'm very familiar with both of the proposed tenants, exceptional organizations with long-term commitments to community. Ravenswood Health Clinic is just a phenomenal and unique and crucial organization. So I just, I know you and your team have worked really hard at this. I know you took feedback and went and found some alternatives in this. And given the constraints that we just heard, and I, I wish we had other options, because I don't think it's best to locate the community amenity in your building, and that's just because of where and how you're located and utilized. I wish we could utilize this community amenity and have it be located more close to the, to the residents that are supposed to be supported. But both of these organizations are exceptional. For me, I would support the Ravenswood Health Clinic. I think it makes a world of sense. I think it's a great opportunity to get families in there. I think you get supportive services. I think it activates the space in really interesting ways that gets a mix of folks in the, in the area. So given what we just heard about with the community amenity, and given that the staff also supports that, I just, I'm a huge fan of the, of the organization, and I think it checks a bunch of boxes in that. And I just wanted to congratulate you and your team for coming up with that. And then finally, I think for my input, Chair Dorn, and because I went first, I rambled on, assuming that people could then riff off of me. I'm not inclined to accept the two requests from, from Gray Star. I sort of defer to the staff on this one. I appreciate, you know, the sunk costs and on the default on this. I don't think Ravenswood's going to default, number one. And number two, there's a whole lot of scrambling about who actually controls those assets in this mix. So for me personally, I'm not inclined to go for either of those two approaches in this. But that's where I stand, and I will stop there and thank the rest of my commissioners for A, allowing me to go first, and B, allowing me to take way too much time.
Thank you. So do we have other commissioners that would like to speak? Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Chair Dorn. Thank you also to staff for sticking with us and for the applicant for, for bringing the project forward in sequential order of the 1 through 6 for the actions and the approvals. Make the required findings, we seek, yes, certify final EIR, yes. Approve the use permit. Effectively, what that's asking is, is this the right thing to do in this area? And the answer to that is yes, this is, this is in alignment, in alignment, excuse me, with the Connect Menlo Plan. And I am unabashedly a fan of that Connect Menlo process, of the Connect Menlo, what it was seeking to do in the process, what it was seeking to do the benefits to the community and looking to bring development balanced with community amenity. Then there is and there are parts of the process that we're revisiting, but on balance. This was a very, very progressive development plan, be it sustainability, be it green building, be it Paseos, be it circulation, be it connectivity, in many different respects for utilizing this, you know, what was formerly an industrial area, specifically the commercial part of the city. So I think it's in alignment with Connect Menlo and accomplishes bringing housing to the area. Architectural control permit, yes. I think we've been through multiple revs on the, on the design, and I think it achieves. And it's very prescriptive down there in terms of development standards, so, you know, penetration, modulation, and the rest of it. So I thank the applicant for their plans and the way that they look at each particular aspect of the architectural review and does it meet this criteria and does it meet that criteria, each with its own individual sheet in the plan, and that makes it easy to reference, so I appreciate that. The, the BMR housing agreement, I swear, I've listened to it three or four times and I've read it, and I just don't, I guess I just don't understand it necessarily, the, the switch, and I'll try to articulate it in that the city needed more moderate units. And was, staff, from staff's perspective, filling in more moderate units met some of the quotas. So as I look at this, and just look at the numbers, I can't see anything other than, you know, we lessened the affordability of it. So in other words, we did deepen the affordability, we came out of the affordability. But yet I see in the staff report that the languaging of this alternative scenario for 67 rental units is equivalent to all low-income units. So my question through the chair is, in the staff report, when it references, and in this particular case, on page 23, the scenario being equivalent to all low-income rental units, is this effectively, are we saying that there's an AMI averaging across the different affordability levels? And when you average the number of moderates with the number of LI, or I think it's ELI in here, that we have VI, very low and low and moderate? And was that an AMI averaging for, for what was done here? So it's a question of the staff in terms of what that means. Thank you.
Right. So it is, it's an averaging in the amount of rent Right. So it is, it's an averaging in the amount of rental subsidy that the developer would provide equivalent to all, all low income units. And so there is a, there's a formula that our housing division uses, a spreadsheet that they have that calculates essentially what the developer subsidy would be. And if they can propose a range of units that, that matches that dollar value, then it's considered equivalent.
And I can, I'll take your word for it. It seems so counterintuitive that we could go from one scenario where there's 67 low income units and six moderate to another scenario where we go from 23 low income units to 43 moderate. And yet it's the same, it's the same number. It's the same contribution. Because if you're going for low income, you're, you're capped at, you can spend of your income by definition.
The subsidy, yeah, the subsidy levels for the very low income units and the low income units are, are fairly steep. And so I think that's where it does average out though to all low income.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So I'm gonna hold on five. And then six, the community amenity operating covenant. I do like the idea of the health clinic. I think it, I think what this, what that proposal does is it matches housing, which is a tremendous need with healthcare. And I think this is a unique opportunity to co-locate a healthcare, urgent care in this case, clinic in a, in a facility, in a, in a building which is highly improved, which is going to have the ability to get folks in and out, which is going to have parking, which is going to have circulation available to it that you might not see in other locations and other sites. So I think it leverages what is, what could be perceived from a ownership standpoint as a, as a fairly non-desirable use in this complex. And I think it, I think that's a good, I think the sighting is quite good. And I think it's, you know, given the size of, it appears that it's within a half mile of everything in the area. I think that's plenty close enough. And I think it's, it's a good mix of, of a need, a real acute need, including its inclusiveness of undocumented workers. That's an opportunity you don't want to pass up. And I look at that and I compare that to, you know, the seed money of three and a half million for buying houses. You know, so much, and on the other, on the other hand, for the community land trust, I like the idea, but so much of it goes to rent for housing. The service staff. And then, you know, you're not left with much seed money to actually buy stuff. So I think from an impact basis on the wider community, for me, it's hands down the health clinic. And I think the setting of it actually is good. And I think it's, it's an unusual opportunity to have it with a new build project like this in this area. So for that reason, my, my preference and my vote would go towards the, the health clinic. And I have no problem picking that from the amenities list. The community came forward when they did a connect mental process. This was a high score on that list. The community spoke it. They want it. I think it's our responsibility to provide it to them. As opposed to other things which seem more vanity projects to me, like coffee shops or, you know, underground utilities. I think this is the right project and the right location, the right amenity for this location. So and then on the BMR housing agreement, I, I, I see the math, I get the math. So that's, that's a fine way to go about it as well. It doesn't, doesn't address the neediest in the community as much, but it is a broader, a broader touch. It's the same subsidy amount. And I will say the reason why it's harder to get the moderate incomes is because when you're not dealing with a tax-fitted project, the capital stacks are very different on projects which include moderate income versus the capital stacks on very low income, extremely low income and so forth, where you have the ability to apply for funding that isn't available when you have moderate income. So for this project at this time, I'm amenable to that as well because we'll catch up on this. The, the extremely low income, very low income, Eli, Eli things on other projects as they come through. So for that reason, I'm in support of the project and I'm support one, one through five. And then on six, Ravenswood Health Clinic is my preference. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Do we have others who would like to speak? Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you also to Mr. Marcos and team. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this project. It's really well designed and especially love the openness and the accessibility to the Paseo. I wanted to also thank Mr. Smith. This is such a multifaceted project and I appreciate your thorough preparation of all the documents and answering all of my questions as a new commissioner. I would agree that I'm fine with the final EIR and the use permit and the architectural control. So I have only a couple of comments about, about the BMR and the community amenity. So for the community amenity, I'm also in favor of the Ravenswood Medical Clinic for the, I, I've, I've heard from many in the Bell Haven community that this is really the preferred option. It fits squarely in the social services improvements in the community's amenities list. It's a terrific amenity and it would alleviate the situation of so many people having to go to Stanford Hospital ER and observing those costs when it's, when it doesn't have to be necessary. The location, it's good proximity to both Bell Haven, North Fair Oaks and the new residence of M2 area. My only wish is that there were more space in this amenity to accommodate a pharmacy as well, as I think that would help not only the community, but the new residents. But not enough, not enough room. I'm in favor of the, and then on BMR, I'm in favor of the alternate BMR proposal as it does get us closer to the RENA 5 requirements. I think, you know, we're still in RENA 5. So, and we really have not done a great job so far of the very low income and especially the moderate income. So I think that's what's required. But I will say going forward, I'm concerned not only about how we can meet the RENA 5, but also how, I'm really concerned about RENA 6. If I look at the 3K, 3,000 units that we're going to have to build, the BMR units required are so much greater than the 15% of the total. So if I just look at the, and maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but if, it seems like we're going to keep having these issues where if the developer needs a 15%, but a 15, if we do 15% every time, we're never going to get to the low income, very low income and moderate that are required. I also really appreciate all of the public comments, but especially Nahisi, I think is the, I might have that wrong. And Sudi about the need that we provide, not just low income, but also land come units that are large enough to support families. So those are my comments and I yield thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ricks?
Yeah, thank you. So I do have a few comments, but I'm certainly inspired to, by Ms. Harris to keep it succinct. So I'll do my best. I, I'll just go through, I guess randomly. Although I'll start in concurrence with the three previous speakers about supporting the EIR. The, the challenges brought. I, I've seen them before and understanding an EIR, I the EIR responded appropriately. Certainly the use permit, I'll skip over the architecture for the moment. And, and then just to weigh in, I'd like to support staff's recommendation for the DMR program. And I also have spoken to a couple of Bell Haven leaders in, over the weekend and today. And I agree that the clinic is a great idea. And as one pointed out, it's actually rather well located for two communities that it can serve, which would be North Fair Oaks as well as Beethoven, since it's in this formerly industrial area, more or less in between. And does not require crossing 101. So I appreciate the response regarding the Paseo and I can see how that could have concerned neighbor property owner. But there are rules about property development that I think are there to, to protect the neighbors. And this is sort of an old school issue that I think is always resolved. And then I would just like to comment that as much as my heart goes to lower income housing, I don't want to fall into the same trap that at least one of our speakers tonight understandably falls into, which is conflating the existence of office building developers, social media companies and a landowner who is proposing housing, which is actually what we want. They're all separate entities and we're dealing with essentially just the kind of project we had hoped would come forward. It's important for, I guess, everyone to understand that Connect Menlo was a zoning effort. It was not an effort to purchase other people's property and then designate what would be built by somebody else's money. We have to look at what this private property can produce, or it simply won't be developed. And we already know over the last 20 years, having watched El Camino Real, that if you don't support economically viable projects, you don't get projects. Case, I think we're doing very well. It, I can't help but note, having been on the commission a long time, that when the high school district decided they wanted to create a new campus over in the Connect Menlo area, the members of the planning commission suggested that that was not a great idea. But apparently the high school district found the purchase price of the land to be more in, more tempting than the potential for the odd mix. And so there we are. This is certainly not a burden on the developer and certainly not a burden on housing. Oh, and I started to say that my heart is with low income housing because that's really where you see the, the need is visible and palpable. But we have done housing surveys repeatedly. And we find that oddly enough, the middle range is the one that is most in demand. And one thing I do know from having been on both sides of the housing market is that if there's a segment that doesn't get its demand met, those would be renters go to the adjacent segments. So if you have people who can afford $5,000 a month, but they don't have any $5,000 a month unit, they will go attack the three and $4,000 a month units, figuring that that's the best they can do. And we would certainly benefit from pulling those people back out into their zone in the hopes that they will leave alone the more affordable market. That's theory. Regarding the traffic impact, I do have to acknowledge, as I typically do, that projects generate traffic. And although this is theoretically counter-commute, there will be an impact on the traffic. There will be traffic that was not there before. And I'm very glad that the, that Menlo Park still addresses LOS because this is what we see when we have to get through. I realize there are philosophical approaches to traffic at the moment which dominate. But the bottom line is that the people in Bell Haven, the people living in the Willows and anyone who has to go from 101 to try to cross the bridge, including and particularly in my interest, Menlo Park residents, need to get through. And so whether these mitigations are paid for out of the TIF or whether they are additional requests through this project, I will leave that to staff. But I'm very glad to see that the effort will be made. And then finally, just regarding the architecture, I have appreciated, much appreciated the work of particularly talented architects who have responded to not only our design guidelines, which are difficult themselves, it can be, but also to the input of this commission, which is not always unanimous. And the result, I think, is, is certainly very responsive. I think the apartment buildings are going to be very attractive. Having previously commented on and seen response regarding the townhouse projects, I think they are designs that will either prove themselves or not. They, while they are not my idea of coming home as an architectural image, they are in the midst of what is a very strongly commercial architectural realm. And so we will see. And within that realm, they're certainly well done. So regarding the actions that we must take, I support everything in the staff report and lean toward the clinic. And if the chair would entertain it, I would like to move to make the findings and the recommendation on this project.
Yeah, I would like to hold off on motions. I think Commissioner Tate wants to speak. I'd like to say a few words. We are 36 minutes away from our deadline. I would like to just remind everyone that I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. Mr. Tate?
And so I, I feel the same way as my fellow commissioners about the upper portion of our, our list here. But I do have questions for the applicant about, well, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to know why there was no consideration given to a mix for the for sale units. If I'm not mistaken, the report said that there was no alternative offered. So that's, that's one, number one thing there, Mr. Marcos. If you can kind of help me understand why one of, at least one of the units is not being offered as a low income, the for sale units?
Yeah, happy to do that. So the requirements for the rental units are, and, and, you know, rules for the rental units are different than for sale units. And so for, for sale units, we're required to provide moderate income units. And so there's not a range that provides the same subsidy. You, you'll never get to, you know, a different subsidy other than by reducing the number of overall for sale units, which is not allowed per, per the BMR code. So we weren't able to provide a variety of units. Just to be upfront, the subsidy required for, for sale units, just in general, is much higher than, for example, one rental unit. And so it's challenging for us to, to provide anything beyond. And so it's challenging for us to, to provide anything beyond a moderate income for sale units.
Okay, I know when I was on the Housing Commission, we had a couple of projects. One in particular that decided to go ahead and add low income units to their for sale. And it really did make an impact. So I understand about the subsidies. But I also see that there are a significant number of rental units. And I, I don't know, I guess I would have really appreciated an effort because I, I think that this might have been something that I brought up before for one, at least one of those units that are for sale at moderate to have been at low income. Home ownership is huge, as we already understand, and it, it gives people a different sense of community and commitment and just overall being. And it would have been greatly appreciated if there was some sort of a way to maybe compromise somewhere else to provide that opportunity for a family. And, and I still encourage you to look at that, although I do understand that tonight is the final, will be the final night, but, but it comes to me with great disappointment that that was not considered. Also, looking at the new mix of, of rental units, I'm, I'm a little concerned there also with the number of studios for low income. And it, it's pretty high. And, and, and I just can't see who's living there when we understand what our community is currently comprised of. And part of this whole thing is, is, you know, in hopes of people who are overcrowded now that are in Bellhaven to have somewhere to go. And let's see, what was the number, Mr. Marcos, of, of studios and junior studios? I think that was how it was.
Yeah.
Classified?
Sure. So this, for the studios, there's seventeen of the hundred and four market rate studios are BMRs. There's forty five of the junior one beds and one beds are BMRs.
Okay, so at low income, what, that's page twenty one or twenty, is that right? Let me try to get back to that page here. Twenty two.
Yeah, twenty one to twenty two, yeah.
Okay, so the new proposal then is for for rental studios at very low and thirteen at low, right? And then we have. So can you tell me again, what is a junior one bedroom?
It's, it's bigger than a studio. It's slightly smaller than a one bedroom. Sometimes it has like a sliding glass door on the bedroom, or it might have an open concept where it's half enclosed bedroom.
Okay. So that, so that, again, that still concerns me that we only have, we, we're looking at, what, five? Five one bedrooms? And then we, the twenty eight at moderate, which, you know, totally, I understand that moderate is, is an area that is often overlooked and that we really do need those. So I, so I get that also, but I just, you know, being a former housing commissioner, I have to share my concerns in those areas. And again, I, I just go back to, to the for sale units and that, that there was no way to make one work, at least one. My next thing is about the urgent care. I think that is like fabulous idea. That is wonderful amenity. But I, but I do wonder whether or not any consideration or, or was given at all to housing that in the new community center as opposed to, you know, you paying for it, but it'd be housed at the new community center as opposed to on, on your property. And I, and I ask that question because really it is more convenient for people that are in Bellhaven to get to the community center than it is to truck over Chillicothe to get to where you're going to be. And I know that there used to be a medical office somewhere attached to the senior center years ago. And, and, and of course, if it were still there, it would have been really welcome. So just, just wondering whether or not there had been any conversations with Facebook about this at all, or any consideration given to, to housing it at the community center.
I don't know if there were conversations with Facebook about a health clinic there. I do know that there, like you said, there was one at the community center previously. I think it's a challenging.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. By conversation or consideration, discussions with Facebook, I mean between Graystar and Facebook about putting it at the community center.
Okay. There were no conversations between Graystar and Facebook about putting a health clinic at the community center. We did propose at one time having some of our funds go to supporting the community center, but at that point, the community center had already been approved. And the direction was that would not comply with the community amenity list. It's, it's actually a fairly challenging use type because of the airflow transfers that are required and the HVAC requirements, the ceiling heights are requirements are much higher than one might expect. And the number of bathrooms required are much higher than one might expect. And because this is a new build and we started the process with Ravenswood fairly early, we were able to get an architect in, Ravenswood architect in to confirm the fit. And so I, I think it would have been a challenge to get a health center. I'm not saying it couldn't have been done, but it wasn't something that he explored.
Right. Well, again, I, I, I'm very happy and excited that that will be going into that space. Well, it seems unanimous that it'll go in there. But I kind of want to go back to those for sale units again, because I, I, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around this. So what could we do as a city? And, and we have funds in our, in Lufy Funds for housing, BMR. What would it take to be able to maybe do something? I don't, I don't know how to make it work, but to be able to put a for sale unit at low income? Is that something that has been discussed at all with, with housing department or, or even thought of, you know? And is it too late to even consider something like that?
So I think that if on the new community amenity list, or, you know, if staff presented this to new applicants or kind of applicants in the process now who have for sale units, that they are willing to apply some of the community amenity to the for sale units, that there could be some appetite for doing that. We, over the last year, I mean, as, as everyone knows, it's just been an extremely challenging year for, for real estate. And, you know, in some ways that's good because it's made it more affordable for people, but it has made it more challenging for us on the development side of the table. Just to, I, I wanted, the reason why we provided the Valley Community Trust option was we thought that that was one avenue to provide ownership opportunities at whatever affordability levels that the community wanted. You know, VCLT's board is made up of mostly Bellhaven residents who would decide the affordability levels. And so we felt that could be an avenue that would work for ownership units at different affordability. But, but at this point, unfortunately for our project, that, that's not something that we can consider.
Okay, so in your other projects that are going to be coming before us, will there be for sale units? I'm sorry, I, I just, I'm still stuck on this.
Yeah, no, I hear you. There's not for sale units in our other two projects that are in process.
Okay. Well, I see the attorney jumped on, but, but I would like to, to close with saying that I'm hoping that going forward with developers who do have for sale units, that we are able to do something to encourage a range of, 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 you know, affordability when we're looking at the BMR units and, and trying to subsidize those in some sort of way. And I don't know whether or not the attorney can tell us whether or not that's even something that's possible for us to be able to do as a city, because right now we're just sitting on a bunch of funds, I believe. I'm not sure how much money is there, but it just seems like it makes sense because there are projects that are already in process as opposed to, to waiting for someone to submit to Inofa and, you know, I and we understand that the, the guidelines are different between for sale units and, and rental. Okay. I've already said that I, I'm with everything else. So thank you, Mr. Marcos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. So we have twenty two minutes till our self-imposed deadline, and I think we have a number of things to vote on. I keep my comments very brief. I echo a lot of what Commissioner Riggs said. I, I think, you know, in our efforts to make the project better, which is of course our job, I think we have improved it through the, the course of this, this process. But we need to keep in mind that, you know, we have a housing need, we have great need for housing, for rental housing especially. There's been very, very little development of rental housing in Menlo Park from nineteen seventy three until the projects that are currently underway in this district and on El Camino. So there's a huge need for rental housing here. And we have a private party who is one of the largest landlords in the US and a very experienced landlord. When they come in here and develop this property as rental property and own it, they have a record of track record of owning these properties long term. A very responsible landlord capable of doing this and supplying what we urgently need, you know, almost five hundred units of housing. So I think that we need to keep that in mind. We need to work within what's doable and what's bill, billable. We want to get the best development we can get, but we don't want to set our standards so high that we don't get any development. That would be, that would be a real tragedy. So I really respect Graystar and their efforts to date. I think they've listened to us. And the project has evolved over time and I'm very happy to see that. I just want to say in, in passing, we had this, we had this comment from the neighboring landlord, landlord of the Bahanan organization about the grade levels. And I do believe that, you know, staff believes that this will be resolved at the building permit stage. We don't have all the details on what the retaining wall construction will be at this point, but the building permit process will take care of that. I don't have a lot to add to what my fellow commissioners have said about the specific findings that we're looking for. I will say that I think the urgent care facility is a great use of this space. And I agree with Commissioner Barnes that by building this new and planning it in new construction, that it's probably better than it could be if it were built someplace else. So I do support, and I think that's one of the advantages of having onsite amenities, that they can be planned and architected from the beginning to make the best use of, you know, what the space is and what the dollars available are. So with that, I'll close. I think Commissioner Kennedy has popped up and may have something to say. No?
I have nothing, I have nothing to add that's, that's different from, from any of my other commissioners. You know, I do think that the ongoing challenge around both placement and for large volumes of housing, whether it's rental or sale housing is still, is, we still haven't figured that out. And we still haven't figured out how to bundle housing and effective and, and effective means of transportation for those folks living in those homes to the places that they work. Because we all know for a fact that they're not all going to work locally.
Thank you. So we have a number of attachments to, I think it's clear where the commission stands, but we have a number of attachments to the staff report with resolutions that I want to make sure that we get to all of them properly and we make the findings that we need to make. And I see the attorney, but also Commissioner Barnes popping up. Commissioner Barnes? You're on mute.
So I was probably taking unwarranted jump in. We had a first from Commissioner Riggs on the table, if that's still on the table, if that is, then I'll jump in with a second on that. And then we can unpack the different pieces within that, or we can do it as a slate if we choose to do that. But I just want to recognize that I think there's a first. Commissioner Riggs, you didn't confirm whether your first is still live? And if so, I'll second that, but I'll throw back to the chair.
I suppose the first is still before us, but I would just ask the maker of the motion to possibly clarify the motion. I think we, we need to make some detailed findings in the attachments. There's a number of things, you know, that need to be in a resolution. So maybe I could direct, I think it's put most succinctly at the bottom of page thirty two. If it's agreeable, the maker of the motion, I'd like to see a motion to certify the final environmental impact report, adopt the findings required by CEQA and adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program as attached to the staff report's attachment A. Is that agreeable, Riggs?
If I, if I may, through the chair? Yeah, we don't need a separate motion on the, each of the approvals that are required tonight. So we can take one motion that makes the recommendations presented by staff on the first page of the staff report, which includes six different items for the planning commission to approve. You can either read that whole recommendation to the record, or I'm fine with a motion that just reiterates what I just said. And then I also want to mention that we do have a few revisions that I'd like to present to you before a motion is going to be made. As I said earlier, I, I don't think that the revisions are substantial enough that they will impede a motion that is going to be made, but I'd like to go through those briefly with you when the time is most appropriate, Chair.
Well, since you saved us a few minutes on voting, you're entitled to go through your list. So please do.
Perfect. Okay, so I will just go through each of these proposed revisions to the documents that are in the record. And then the maker of the motion, if the commission is amenable to it, can make the motion subject to the revisions that I've just read. The first is that.
If I could just clarify, are these the same revisions that Mr. Smith listed some time ago at the beginning of our meeting?
They are those and a few additional ones. And I will go through the ones that he referenced also, just to make sure we have a clear record of the revisions. These are changes to the proposed operating covenant, which is attached to the resolution approving the use permit, the operating covenant and the BMR agreement. And the first change is a change to section four C to replace the word sole in the fifth line with reasonable. That changes to just make clear that any excuse me, any revisions to the application for a proposed replacement use will be at the reasonable discretion of the sole discretion of the city. The second change is to section five B of the operating covenant to add a sentence at the, at the end of that section, which reads, "The owner may submit a request in writing to the city manager for a minor modification to the operating standards described in this subsection based on a reasonable business necessity to do so. Any such minor modification approved by, approved by the city manager shall be memorialized in writing between the owner and the city." Those additional two sentences, just Those additional two sentences just enable the operator to make minor modifications to the operating standards in the event um, some changes to the urgent care clinic are needed. Um, we also think that change is reasonable. And then changes to subsection six, to section six of the operating covenant include those changes that um, Tom Smith earlier mentioned. It would be to revise the value of two million fifty-eight thousand dollar, I'm sorry, to revise, yes, to revise the value of two million fifty-eight thousand dollars to one million eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand and five-hundred dollars, and that was just a mathematical error. Um, and then the other change to that section would be to remove subsection five, um, which is, requires a direct in-lube payment to the city in the amount of three hundred thousand, and change section four to encompass that three hundred thousand, the value in subsection four would be changed from one million, one million four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars to one million seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-seven, three-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Um, and again, that was an error, drafting error on staff's part. Um, the applicant's proposal did not reflect the three hundred thousand dollar in-lube fee contribution. Um, there are some typographical errors in subsection six B, um, which referenced uh, the word owner when it should have said operator. And I believe that is all, um, that it, those are all of the changes with the exception of um, the final change, which is an additional condition of approval, um, or I'm sorry, a modification to condition of approval two N to read as follows, "Prior to occupancy of the first apartment building to be constructed on site, the applicant shall construct the paseo and publicly accessible open space on the apartment building parcels for the project to the satisfaction of the building, engineering, planning, and transportation divisions. The remainder of the publicly accessible open space on the townhome parcel shall be constructed prior to occupancy of the first townhome building on site." And um, that change was described earlier um, by Tom, and I just realized one that I failed to mention earlier, in the recitals to the community amenity operating agreement, um, there is a reference to a legal description for the community amenity space. That recital should be changed to reference um, uh, uh, community amenity space, which is depicted in um, the exhibit attached here, too. There will be no separate legal description for the community amenity space.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, are those amenable?
Uh, yes, they are, and I'd be happy to um, uh, restate it somewhat more specifically.
Please.
Would be that uh, I move to make the required findings per recommendation one, to approve the use permit per recommendation two, to approve the architectural control permit for recommendation three, and attachment B, to recommend the city council approving the vesting tentative map per recommendation four, to approve the BMR housing agreement per recommendation five, to approve the community amenity per recommendation six, noting the uh, Ravenswood Clinic, and then the, was it five or six revisions as just stated by Ms. Doherty in public record to this commission?
And, and one final clarification to the motion, um, the recommendations that you just read are appropriate, and I want to clarify that the recommendations, although they don't reference the proposed resolutions, include approval of the resolutions that have been presented to the Planning Commissioner in the record this evening.
Thank you. As a corporate lawyer, that uh, that gladdens my heart.
And by the way, I'll just briefly note that um, although I made a motion um, before all speakers uh, had had an opportunity, um, my understanding uh, of Roberts is that uh, a motion does not preclude additional comment, and so I um, would not particularly, since I'm not in, in the chair, but I would never want to preclude comment after the making of a motion. Uh, I believe in some organizations, a motion actually begins the commentary, so I just wanted to clarify that I didn't have any um, intent of um, closing our meeting early.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and do we need to uh, reconfirm the second uh, as the motion has been amended? Commissioner Barnes, still seconding, motion has amended? You're on mute.
My second stands for the uh, motion as articulated.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the roll, Commissioner Barnes.
Can I?
Mr. Harris, you have a comment?
I had a, I had, sorry, I'm probably messing up all the rules of order, but I have a question. When we are confirming this motion, are we, what are, did we include the um, request um, for payment or not payment um, on the two things that?
No.
Uh, Mr. Mark, okay, so.
The, the motion is to approve the, the resolutions as set out in the staff report, the recommendation in the staff report.
Okay.
That's without any changes that were requested.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Certainly, okay, so Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Okay, um, Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy? Okay, that looked like you were saying yes, a thumbs up, so I'll note for the record that was a yes. Um, Commissioner Riggs?
I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And I'll vote in favor, that makes it seven-zero in favor of the resolutions as stated and as amended. We can close this matter F-two and see if we have any informational items. G-one, do we have any informational, any additional informational items? Sandoval?
Yes, so um, because, because of the July fourth holiday, uh, the next meeting will be in three weeks instead of two, so we don't have the items finalized yet, um, but it looks like we'll have a number of small items on that um, July twelfth agenda. Um, and that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Ten fifty-five, we're getting by just under the wire. I don't have any questions from Ms. Sandoval, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Doran, good inaugural ride.
Thank you.
Thank you.